I call to order this meeting, I'm sorry, workshop of the San Marcos City Council. It is Thursday, February 22nd of the year 2024. It is 5:34. Mr. Trevino, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Carza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, um, citizen comment time period. No one has signed up. Then we will go straight into presentation one of one.
Receive staff presentation, hold discussion regarding the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget policy for the city of San Marcos and provide direction to the city manager. Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Each budget cycle is dynamic, and the process leading up to adoption of our budget will always look a bit different than the last time. We have a very deliberate budget process in San Marcos that is outlined by city code. The process starts at a high level with visioning and this budget policy workshop. At these sessions, council provide the parameters of what you would like staff to work on and include in the proposed budget. The schedule also includes regular check-ins for staff to keep elected officials as well as the public informed of what they can expect to see at the proposed budget in August. Staff has also worked to increase community engagement surrounding the budget. This includes informational videos, presenting the budget in front of the Neighborhood Commission, and incorporating the financial piece of our upcoming education series. As we prepare our 2025 budget, we're mindful of council's interest in mitigating increases in property taxes and utility rates. The state legislature has passed property tax relief last year with school property taxes, which is why taxpayers are seeing school and city taxes closer together in overall tax amounts. San Marcos being so sales tax dependent hurts us due to the volatility in the economy. We need to balance our property tax base to change the ratio of how we get our revenues and offset the swings in the market that come with sales tax. This fiscal year, we have also seen a decline in sales tax over the past few months, and staff is trying to recoup that amount with some of the cost-saving measures outlined in today's presentation. We must diligently monitor revenues and expenses as well as forecast for 2025, knowing that we're short in 2024. We will keep the council informed of the expected impacts as we receive additional information, such as the property tax rolls and additional months of sales tax data. The way to mitigate the continual ask of our residents, taxpayer, our residential taxpayers is to have more and higher paying taxpayers in the system, officially, specifically commercial and industrial. And that does not mean heavy industrial. It could be light industrial or some, some combination of such. Single-family residential typically requires more city resources than the amount of tax revenue that is collected from those same residential units. Growth is going to happen in this area, especially with Texas State's intention to increase enrollment. We need to be honest with ourselves with how we want to look in our community and be aware of how that affects our financial situation. We see different attitudes towards growth in our surrounding communities of Kyle, Buta, New Braunfels, and Wimberly. We know residents have different perspectives when it comes to commercial and industrial projects, but without growth in those sectors, we're likely to be looking at what areas we need to cut instead of determining if we can provide additional services. In order to achieve a more balanced state, we must examine our position as a business-friendly community. Ideally, revenue increases would come from the right mix of commercial development to lessen the burden on the residential taxpayers. The best way to mitigate property tax increases is having a more stable tax base that can come from taxpayers that consistently pay more into the system. The same holds true with our utility rates. The annual demand to keep up our rates, keep our rates low has led to spinning down our ending balances, and in our electric utility has led to downgrading of our utility bond rating. This simply is not sustainable. Throughout the last two years, we were able to focus on personnel and core services, and we want to continue to prioritize and expand on these things with more than one, with a more than one-year outlook moving forward. We had good discussion at your visioning session last, last month going over budget priorities for the next few years and reviewing the strategic plan to ensure it reflects that direction. Today's meeting is only the next step in the process of our budget discussion. We will have several more opportunities to discuss topics brought up today. We appreciate city council's willingness to collaborate with our staff, setting parameters that will guide not only our upcoming budget process, but our operations throughout the next few years. There is still a lot of work to do in the months ahead to develop this budget, but your discussion today and approval of the budget policy statement in March will provide the direction needed to ensure it reflects your goals. Before we begin this evening's presentation, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our Director of Finance, John Locke, as well as Budget Manager Tricia Potek, for their time and effort preparing this information. They have spent many hours compiling data and providing council-requested information that we can use to help inform your decisions about our community and, and our current financial situation and future budget needs and constraints. I thank you for your time and commitment to our beloved community. I'm now going to turn it over to Director John Locke.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is the agenda of what we'll be discussing today. We'll begin by looking at the fiscal year 25 budget calendar and development timeline for the budget, discuss some budget process, the budget process and city council's strategic goals. We'll look at some economic development, specifically with tax increment financing and Chapter 380 agreements, and then we'll have a fund discussion of all the major operating funds. Beginning with the budget calendar, we've already had the city council visioning, and so now we're at the budget policy workshop. As Ms. Reyes pointed out in her opening statement, the budget policy workshop will provide the parameters that staff will use in building the fiscal year 25 budget. That will ultimately be considered by city council in March, and once we have that document, staff will move forward in building the fiscal year 25 budget, making sure that it's following the budget policy that's adopted in March. We're scheduled to present to the Neighborhood Commission in April. Last year, we presented to them in August, and we wanted to get there a little bit earlier to get their input early in the budget process, so we'll be there in April. We're also planning to go back to the Neighborhood Commission after the budget is proposed to city council in August as well. The preliminary tax rule will be received in, at the end of April, and as you'll see as we go through some of the slides, especially the slides covering property tax, that, that'll be a big month for us to see where, how our preliminary tax rule comes in. We have two budget workshops scheduled, one for May, one for June, and prior to receiving the certified tax rule in July. Up until July, we'll be working on just preliminary numbers as it relates to the tax rule. We plan to submit the budget to city council on August 20th, and on that same day, city council will set the maximum proposed tax rate. There are two public hearings scheduled for both the budget and the tax rate. That'll be on September 3rd and 17th, and the budget is scheduled to be adopted on September 17th. This provides a budget development timeline, and at each one of the meetings, what city council could expect to receive from staff in, in terms of the information as we start, you know, beginning with the visioning process, and it's really wide, and as we go through, we get more granular and start to get into more detail as we begin to build the fiscal year 25 budget. After the budget policy in May, the city manager will deliver the budget capacity trends to city council, and in June, will deliver a draft of the programs and revenues included in the fiscal year 25 budget, and as we touched on earlier, in August is when the proposed budget will be delivered to city council, which will ultimately be adopted in September. Ms. Reyes touched on the budget being a dynamic process. One of the, the, one of the most important things is we want to make sure that the budget aligns with city council's strategic goals, and focusing on the core services that the city has to provide and is already providing to residents. We want to be diligent in managing our available capacity, and not only looking at how the decisions that we're making are going to impact us in fiscal year 25, also how those decisions are going to impact us down the road over the next three to five fiscal years. And we continually monitor and respond to changes in revenues and expenses. A good example of this is our sales tax revenue, and there's a couple of slides where we're going to get into that a little later in the presentation. These are the city council's current strategic goals. There are five goals. The, the broad categories are quality of life, sense of place, economic vitality, public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence, mobility and connectivity, and environmental protection. So as, as we move forward in the budget process, all of the programs and activities included in the budget should tie back to one of these strategic goals that city council has set. The first thing we're going to discuss is economic development, and just beginning with, you know, why economic development is needed. It generates more employment opportunities that lead to better jobs, that increase the standards of living for our residents. It also diversifies and expands the tax base, which reduces the tax burden on residents. Essentially, the resident, the residential component of the tax base doesn't pay for itself. So with the commercial, tends to subsidize the residential. So finding that right balance between commercial and residential can lessen the tax burden on our residents. New businesses also require supplies and services that promote and, and expand what current businesses are already doing. So when new businesses come in, they need the services that our current vendors are already providing, and that can help their businesses grow as well. And it also improves the quality of life by bringing in needed amenities to the city. And this includes things such as good quality education, new parks, or expanding current parks, and local access to shopping and entertainment venues. The types of economic development tools that the city uses is tax increment financing, Chapter 380 agreements, and tax abatements. So beginning with our tax increment financing overview, the tax increment financing is a financing method that the city can use that'll pay for improvements, that'll encourage economic development within a particular geographic area. The city currently has four different tax increment zones. One is a transportation reinvestment zone, and the other three is a tax increment reinvestment zone. Included with the, the packet for this evening is a separate handout that has more detail about each one of those zones. We'll go over some of the high-level information within the presentation. Some of the benefits of, with tax increment zones is they, they boost development and grow property value and increases property tax revenue within the zone. And they, and they build and encourage development by reducing the private investment needed for a development by providing public infrastructure. So these zones can cover the costs of the public infrastructure that reduces the cost to bring in a new development to a particular This slide provides an overview of how tax increment financing works. A tax increment zone is good for a specified period of time, and this slide, you can see that it's good for a 20-year period. When a tax increment financing zone is created, there's a base value. So whatever that value is, when that zone is first created, becomes the base. The city will continue to receive the tax revenues from the base that it was already receiving when, when the zone was first created. As the development occurs and the, and the tax values increase, those values, a portion of those values is what will go into the zone to help pay for the public infrastructure within the zone. The other portion, the city will receive to operate on currently. Eventually, after that 20-year period and all of the development has occurred, that tax increment zone will end, and the city will have all of the tax revenues now, because we've already paid for all of the public infrastructure. And it's important to note that this tax increment financing is not a new tax. It just redirects a portion of the new property tax revenue that's generated within that zone to pay for the public infrastructure and the improvements within the zone.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Is that 20-year a, a legal maximum or just a usual?
20-year is just what was used for this example.
Okay. Thank you.
So begin with our transportation reinvestment zone. This was created to pay the city's portion of the construction costs related to Loop 110 from McCarty Road to Yarrington. The original agreement associated with, with this is that the city and county combined would repay $48 million to text for the construction of this road. The city's portion of that is $24 million, or half of the amount. As of fiscal year 23, the city has contributed about $11.5 million towards that. So based on our forecasted amount, the city will have repaid the $24 million in that original agreement by around fiscal year 2026. And, and what this slide will show you is the, the green is the additional city revenue. Blue is the, the revenue captured by the tax reinvestment zone. And what the, in this particular zone, the city's participation is 50%. So that incremental value that we discussed on the last slide, the city keeps 50% to operate and use now, and the other 50% goes to the zone to repay the cost of the Loop 110. In fiscal year 24, the total tax revenue generated was $9 million. Four and a half million of that went to the zone to repay the construction costs, and the, the city retained the other four and a half million to operate on currently. And what, what this provides is a forecast just based on our internal assumptions on the growth of the zone, where we think that will be. So by fiscal year 26, the total revenue will be $10 million, and that's the year that we're forecasting right now that the city will repay the $24 million. The next zone is the tax increment reinvestment zone number three. It's for our conference center. This is for repayment of the conference center debt, and this is in addition to the 2% venue tax. The city's cost participation with this is a set amount of the tax rate. It's .4702 of our .6030 tax rate, which is, so the city currently retains about 22% of the revenue generated within this zone, and the rest of it, it goes towards repaying the debt of the conference center. As you can see by the chart, in fiscal year 24, the total revenue generated is $166,000. Of that amount, $130,000 will go towards repayment of the debt, and $37,000 will be retained by the city. The next zone is the number, Zone 4, which is the kissing tree. The purpose that this was formed was to provide public infrastructure for this development, which included roads, water, wastewater lines, storm, as well as stormwater management. The cost participation with this zone is 40% to the TERS and 60% to the city. In fiscal year 24, the total revenue estimated to be generated is $3.3 million within the boundaries of this zone. Of that amount, the city will retain $2 million to operate on currently, and $1.3 million will go into the zone to repay for this infrastructure that has been put in. This is, this is a good example of a project that may not have occurred, or may not have occurred on the same level that it did without providing this economic development tool, without providing this zone. This zone provided that public infrastructure to help the developer be able to, to build the homes in that subdivision there. And our final zone is our downtown TERS number five. The cost participation of this zone is 70%. Goes to the zone, and 30% of the tax revenues comes to the city. In fiscal year 24, the total revenue estimated to be generated is 1.7 million. Of that amount, the city would retain $500,000 to operate on, and $1.2 million gets put into the zone for one of the purposes within the downtown TERS. You'll see there is a drop in revenue. This is related to the Texas State purchasing those two hotels. The total revenue loss associated with that is $475,000.
You said hotels, but you meant apartments, right?
Yes, thank you, for the clarification. Yes, you had two apartments. And the, the zone, the impact to the zone, both of those apartments are located within this TERS 5. The impact to TERS 5 is $266,000, and the remained, remainder of the impact is to the general fund, which is about $209,000. Okay, so that is all of our TERS, and now we'll move on to the Chapter 380 agreements. Chapter 380 agreements, similar to TERS, provide municipalities to offer incentives designed to promote economic development, which is what a tax increment financing does. So the Chapter 380 agreements allow us, with our policy that permits incentives in the form of sales, or property tax rebates, job-based grants, or waivers for certain development standards. The city currently has a total of 11 Chapter 380 agreements, and there's a link in the presentation that will take you to the Comptroller's database. All, all of the agreements that the city has and any amendments to that agreement are housed on the, on the Comptroller's database.
And Mayor, if I can, Mr. Locke, thanks for, appreciate you putting in that link. It was pretty easy to use and navigate, and I went back and looked at all the old agreements. So I encourage anybody who has any questions about our 380 agreements, that that link to the Comptroller's office was really nice and easy to use.
Good, good to hear.
And they can use it to see who we are giving an incentive to, what they got in other cities, if anybody's interested to.
Yeah, I did, I did a little digging. It was, it was fun. So, but thank you. It was a nice link and easy to use.
Oh, good, good to hear. Some of the benefits for, or that Chapter 380 agreements provide the city is the opportunity to offer incentives to attract new businesses, industries, and needed amenities into the city. It also stimulates business and commercial activity, promoting local economic development. It enables the city to bring in desirable businesses that enhance the community's quality of life, and it cultivates a community and environment that residents are drawn to, so it'll track and retain residents. This slide provides an overview of all 11 of the city's Chapter 380 agreements. They're in order by the ending date, so the, each one of these agreements has a term, and they're, that's the order that they're shown in. What we have boxed there is what the estimated total revenue from that agreement will be, what the estimated rebate will be back to, back to the business, and then what the net benefit is to the city. This assumes that all of the conditions are met within that, within the economic development agreement that the city has with the business. So, for instance, if you take Tanger, the total estimated project revenue is $3.4 million. Of that amount, the city would rebate $2 million, and the net benefit to the city will be $1.3 million. If you keep going to the right, that just shows what we've actually, what has actually occurred to date. So for Tanger, Tanger's actually generated $2.3 million. $1.2 million has been rebated, and the net benefit to the city is $1 million. Just a couple things that, to point out on this is, we spoke on the, a previous slide about bringing amenities into the city, such as local shopping and restaurants. You see Tanger and Springtown both provide that to us. That's one of the benefits of these, of the Chapter 380 agreements and the TERS, and the TERS to attract businesses to the area. So you have the Tanger and Springtown that keep residents shopping here locally rather than going up or down 35, you know, to, to shop at a similar place or to eat at a similar venue. We also, two of the, the top two taxable value businesses are also on this list, with HEB and Amazon. So they have the highest taxable value of all of the taxable value within the city. And I'll go ahead and go to the next slide that provides more of a, a summary of that slide, and it, and it shows the total benefit to the city. So if, if you look in 2024, it has the, the total revenue that will be generated from those Chapter 380 agreements is $2.8 million. Of that amount, $2.1 million will be rebated back to the business, and the city will retain $700,000. And you can see the way that these are structured, some of them are more front-loaded so that the business receives a higher amount upfront, and then it, it gets lower the longer the agreement goes on. And also, you, you have some of these agreements are going to end, so the city won't be paying any rebates to the business. So as, as the years go out, the green gets larger, and that green is what the net benefit is to the city. By the time we get to 2034, there will be no payments being made under the current 380 agreements, so the total estimated revenue of $6.1 million will be all the cities. There's a chart off to the right that just has what the total estimated rebate is. That's for all of the, all 11 of the 380 agreements, and you can see by the time we get to 2034, there is no more rebate. So that, that ends our discussion on the economic development, and we would begin to go more into general fund, specific discussion. I'd be, are there any questions on that before we go through?
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just kudos for staff, too, putting together this 380 agreement charts. We've asked in the past a lot about when do these fall off, what do they mean, and it was nice to see them on different charts and different levels and have the link to be able to go in and actually see that, you know, in 2029, you can actually put pen to paper here and see the differences of, of how much it is going to be a net benefit to the city over the long run. A lot of times, we see how much money's going out, but it's nice to see how much is going to come in over the next few years. So, good job on all these charts and putting all this together.
Yes, it is.
One question.
About time.
There you go. When you're talking about HEB, are we talking about the stores, or are we talking about the warehouse?
The warehouse. Thank you. Yes, sir.
That was when they did that big expansion, I think, was when that deal was struck.
Mr. Prather?
So regarding economic development, the Chapter 380 agreements, HEB grocery stores, is it possible to have like something, like a policy in writing beforehand to like let the business community know, let grocery stores know, like if you're looking, San Marcos is looking for a third grocery store, can we just have something forward, you know, before they even approach us? So, you know, to encourage those kind of discussions?
So it, you're, that's something that Mr. Pentalian and Mr. Smith and I have been doing. discussing as of now and, and wanting to bring something back to council to actively market and show that we are open for that. It may involve us bringing an incentive package that we would get for your consideration and put out there as an RFP to say, San Marcos is looking for somebody. This is what we would do, you know, if you're willing to locate here. So that's, that's what we're talking about and wanting to do very actively and so we will be bringing more information to you in the future.
How long have I been bringing that up at Vision Workshop? So yes, I'm glad we're.
We're definitely, definitely have heard and, and we've also talked with some of the development community that have certain prime real estate to say, hey, if y'all could get a grocery store, recruit a grocery store on your piece of property, that would be a really, a really big win for our community. So trying to do it, approach it from different avenues.
And our economic development policy will certainly provide a lot of guidance and that's a public document on our economic development page. So if somebody's just, you know, perusing at midnight and they kind of like to look and see what, what we do and, and kind of how we do it, some of that is out there for the public.
I'm glad these conversations are being held. You know, this is kind of the first I'm hearing that and in public, if you're hearing that, you know, we are looking at this and to our business community, especially grocery stores. We are very interested in a third grocery store in our community.
I know there has been a lot of, you know, the mayors talked with people, we've talked with people, we've talked with business, you know, community members too, and it just, they, it has not, there's not been that willingness to do it. So we want to take it a step further by trying to see if we can dangle something that might be attractive to somebody to want to locate here because we, we understand the need, we agree there's a need and we really want to see something happen here.
Fantastic.
Awesome. Thank you for bringing that up Jude, um, because I've been asking like what, what do I need to do, say for HEB? Do I need to write them a song, an apology letter? Why are they ignoring us? We've, we've been needing an HEB, anything really, not just HEB, but.
I went, I went there and, and talked to the lady.
Oh, wow.
October will be two years this year. And presented data and how many more front doors we have and, and they listened and they asked a few more questions, email back and forth, and I kept waiting, but I'm still waiting.
I'll dress up as HEB buddy, like, I mean, whatever.
Well, the HEB buddy and, and, and you know, at, at this point, you know, we've been fortunate to have the HEBs and I'd love it to be another HEB, but we're willing to look elsewhere if HEB doesn't feel like it's something that suits their, their model, you know, to, to do another one, we're willing to expand our, our look and look and see if there's somebody else who might be willing to do it if it's not HEB.
We'll sing for other people too.
Yes, yes.
At one time we had Kroger's here, Safeway and.
Wees.
Yeah.
I'm going way back, right? I remember.
Apple Tree, Co's grocery, Aradondo's grocery.
Apple Tree.
Although a bunch of those were in the same place as the little HEB is now.
Yeah, I think this is something that will be desperately needed and thank you for guys for putting something together because I think if you put it out there and we really market it, they hear us talking about it, we talk about it almost seems like every week now, that maybe, you know, hangle it and dangle something out there that really gets somebody to bite on. So thank you for working on it.
Well, then maybe we keep some of that sales tax here that's going elsewhere right now.
For sure.
And I don't have to drive so far just to get a gallon of milk. That'd be awesome.
Thank you for working on that.
Okay, so the general fund begins our fund discussions. The general fund is the primary operating fund for core government services and it's used to account for all resources that are not required to be accounted for in another fund. The two primary revenue sources for the general fund are sales tax and property tax. And it supports core services that include public safety, parks and recreation, neighborhood enhancement and the capital improvement program. And, and this would be for the government services such as roads and new fire departments. As the city grows, this fund helps support that. Beginning with the general fund forecast and this, this slide really impacts all of the forecasts that we're going to go over this evening. So it is a, it's a common considerations across all funds. Those include aligning the budget with city council strategic plan goals that, that we've already gone over this evening. Also continue revenue forecasting based on historical trends and, and we'll get into a little bit more detail of, of what that is as we go through the presentation. Increase operating expenses due to continue a rise in inflation. Thankfully, we're not seeing the inflation that we have over the past couple of years. It's not at that 8% and 11%. It's, it's down closer to around 3%. Incorporate benefits from economic development. Those economic development tools and agreements that we just went over, we're incorporating those into the budget. Consider staffing elements that include evaluating recruitment and retention strategies for staff. Continue implementing employee benefits as reflected in employee compensation philosophy. And this includes employee benefits and developing merit and career progression plans for staff. Increase personnel to adequately support the core services that the city provides residents. We'll also update the financial policy as needed as we move throughout the fiscal year 25 budget process and we'll be submitting a debt management plan to city council for consideration.
And before he moves on, I don't think that anyone could have said it as articulately and eloquently as Mr. Stan Beard, who was here from Buc-E's on Tuesday, saying that their business model is predicated on having good people to support their mission of customer service and service delivery. So that is one thing that I hope, you know, resonates to as, as we're trying to be an employer of excellence, we also have to have very good philosophies in terms of compensating and recruiting and, and being able to retain talented staff because that too is core to our service delivery for our community members. So I, I just thought that was perfect timing to hear that right ahead of some of the things that y'all will be discussing as part of this process.
As we begin fiscal year 25 budget, we're taking a look at what was requested in fiscal year 24 by departments and there wasn't enough capacity to include it within the fiscal year 24 budget. In total, there were $5 billion of requests that, for fiscal year 24, where there just wasn't enough capacity to fit it within the budget. That included 56 different positions and you can see a list by, by department and the number of positions that were requested along with the associated costs for those positions. And there was also four operating requests. These operating supplemental requests are for something that is for a new program or to enhance a program above the current level of service delivery that department is currently providing. And those totaled 193,000 that where there just wasn't enough capacity in the fiscal So internally, staff was using a forecasted assumption. Staff looks at a forecast that, that will go out, you know, 10 years and, and obviously the law further you get out, the, the more questions you have, but, and in particular the, the near term, the three to five year mark, it just lets you know that all the decisions that we're making today, how's that going to impact us in the next three to five years? So when, when, when we share what this original forecast assumption is, this was what we were operating, operating on until we received some information lately on both property tax and sales tax that made us need to refine those a little bit. So this original forecast includes reappraisal growth from taxable valuations. That's, that's just the increase on the value of a home from one year to another as well as new taxable value being added to the tax rule. The assumptions do not include any of the tax increment financing that we just went over. The taxable value increases for 2025 and 2026 were 10%. So that means that there's an assumption that the taxable values were going to increase by 10% for each one of those years. There's a typo there where it says 2026 again, that should actually be 2027, is 5% and then 2028, 7%. And just as a point of reference listed there is what the average taxable value growth the city has experienced over the past three and five years. So our three-year average is 15% and our five-year average is 14%. So that, that kind of, it puts it in perspective when we're estimating 10% growth, it's not that far away from, from what we're actually experiencing. From a sales tax perspective, we were estimating 2.5% growth year over year using the fiscal year 24 budget as the anchor. So we were assuming that we were going to receive all of our fiscal year 24 budget. On the expenditure side, the personnel expenditure, expenditures will increase anywhere between 3 and 5% and all other expenditures will increase by 3% year over year to allow for inflationary impacts. So this is what the original forecast looked like. If you see in fiscal year 24, I'll just touch on, you'll, you'll notice that the, the green is revenue, the blue is the expenditure. And fiscal year 24, there is a planned use of fund balance. So that's why the rev, the revenues are lower than the expenditures. Exactly what that was, was we set aside 2.8 million dollars for the new city hall project, 1.2 million dollars for the fiscal year 2023 capital improvement program and $1 million for the capital outlay. And, and all of that isn't, is, some of that has been put on hold and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Looking at fiscal year 25, our, with our original forecast, with all of those assumptions that, that we covered on that previous slide, the estimate was as we were going to have be bringing in $2 million more revenue than expenses. And, and you can see as you move to the right through 2028, that revenues were going to keep pace with inflation, inflation and we, and we're going to bring in more revenue So this slide has the revised assumptions that, that we have and this is after some changes and some additional information that we received. First is, we touched on earlier, the impact of Texas State purchasing the, the two apartment properties was $209,000 to the general fund. So it's been adjusted for that change. The other change is data that we have, data that we are seeing suggests that the taxable value for, I can't say the taxable value, the, the market value for the average home in the city of San Marcos has decreased by 6%. So knowing that that's what the data is suggesting right now, we brought our estimates down from, on the prior slide, it was 10% and now we're saying 6% is the total growth we're going to see. That also includes the new value that, that'll be added to the tax rule too. And as we touched a little bit envisioning, the, the calculation for the taxable value is, is fairly complex and over the past few years, there, there've been a lot of homes that have hit their homestead cap. Each homestead is capped at 10%. So as a home has hit that 10% cap, it's, at some point, it could become frozen, or I'm sorry, it could become taxable, it's just not taxable in that given year. So as values decrease, it's possible that if the value doesn't decrease as much as what has went into the homestead cap, that that particular home could still have a, their total taxable value won't decrease from the prior year. That is just one of the, the intricacies that go in to the, the overall tax rate, tax rate evaluation process that, that makes it somewhat complicated, but this is, these are the assumptions that we're operating on as of right now. We are estimating still in '26 and '27 that we'll see a 10% growth and in '28, 4.5% growth. And again, just as a point of reference, you know, our three and five year is 15% and 14%. We had to also revise our sales tax with the base increasing 2% year over year and the outlets remaining flat. And this is from our forecasted fiscal year 24 instead of using the budget as an anchor. And there's a, a slide here shortly that'll illustrate how big of an impact that is. The expenditure assumptions are the same, those did not change. So just with those changes in revenue that, that we just went over, you look at fiscal year 25 and instead of being positive 2 million or 3 million short, so that's a, that's a $5 million total swing and that is all just from those change in the assumptions with property tax and sales tax. And also as you move out in the outer years from 2026 out, just in '26, that we are short a million dollars and we were to the good originally. And by '27, our revenues are exceeding expenditures and they stay that way for '28 as well. So these, the next couple of slides are, we'll dig a little deeper into the sales and property tax trends and provide a little bit more information on why those, the assumptions were updated for each one of those. This first slide just shows the total sales and property taxes city receives for fiscal year 24 and how that is distributed. So the, the total received for property tax is 57 million and for sales tax, 40 million for a total of $97 million. Of that amount of property tax, 13 million goes to debt, 7 million goes to the tax increment financing zones and what's left for operations is 36 million. So as, as you can see, we start with 97 million total and we have 76 million remaining to operate on. So when, when you break that down to every dollar of property tax and sales tax, 79 cents of every dollar collected in property tax and sales tax are used for operations, 14 cents are used for debt and seven cents for the tax increment financing. And, and as we were discussing before, the tax increment financing hopefully is generating additional revenue down the road for us to operate on. So we'll begin by looking at our sales tax. And this chart shows the, some historical sales tax information as well as where we think we're going to be in fiscal year 25. The blue is what we refer to as our base sales tax and the green is our outlet sales tax. So for fiscal year 23, the base was 31.8 million and the outlet malls were 8.1 million for a total of $40 million. We, we based the budget on a 4% increase and the budget is $42.2 million. Where we're based on the amount of revenue that we've received for the, through the first four months, we're estimating now that total sales tax collections will, will be $40.1 million. So you can see it's, it's about over a $2 million reduction from budget. Applying those assumptions on that previous slide of the 2% to base and keeping the outlet malls flat, that would put us at about $40.8 million for next fiscal year. So if, if you look at fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24, it's as if we've almost skipped a year of growth if the current trends that we're experiencing continue on through the end of the year.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, on the, on the 380 agreements that we had with Tanger, that one was primarily sales tax, was it not?
Yes, sir.
And that one drops off at the end of 2024 and I didn't see a spike in here where that would potentially be an additional income coming from, has that been factored into this chart?
Yes, it, it would be. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The, one other item I'd like to point out is the, the dash green line in the background, that is the percent of sales tax generated by outlet malls of the total sales tax generated. So in 2018, we were close to about 35% and as you can see in 2024, it's closer to 20%. So the city is growing and diversifying its sales tax base and less reliant on the outlet malls.
So it's not so much them dropping, it's, it's the others growing and as such, that's a smaller percent?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that that sounds much better than where my head was going.
Yeah, I I mean, that's that's really a a big takeaway, is that we have done a good job of diversifying our reliance on the outlet malls. We just need to diversify to not be so reliant on sales tax and try to reverse so that we have property tax, because then that'll be a little bit more reliable. Of course, this time, we're seeing a six percent reduction in in home value. So it does fluctuate, but not as much as you do with sales tax. The other thing, as Mr. Lot goes through the presentation, he'll show the industries that are really impacting the sales tax. It's not the outlet malls, it's not retail, it's it's telecommunications and lumber. And that would make sense when it comes to the building market and some of those things going in a downward trend. So some of those things will help to show it's it's not retail.
Yeah, and and you can see from fiscal year twenty-one through where we think we're going to finish in twenty-four, we've been in that eight million dollar range with the outlet malls. And so far this year, they're keeping pace with the sa- same level of sales tax generated last year.
All right, good.
This slide provides a rolling twelve-month average of our total sales tax. And as an example, if you look at December, you see three percent. What that is taking is the total sales tax generated from January through December of twenty twenty-three, and comparing it to the sole total sales tax generated from January through December of twenty twenty-two. And comparing those two numbers, it was three percent higher in December of twenty-three. So each one of those months is comparing it in in that fashion. So when you look back at when we adopted the budget for fiscal year twenty-four in August, we were seeing a nine and a half percent tw- rolling twelve-month average gain. And then since then, you can see how it's dropped pretty significantly. And as late as January of twenty twenty-four, it's at two point two percent.
Yep, need that grocery store in San Marcos.
Do do we have any kind of an idea, what was the kind of average, rolling average of tax sales increases pre-COVID? Were they around three to four percent? Do you have any idea?
We we do have that information. I I we can get it and and provide that to you.
Yeah, that would be good, just to kind of see what it was pre-COVID. I mean, post-COVID is kind of, it messes everything up. But just kind of what those, so thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir. This slide is a traffic chart slide, and it and it so the green shows areas that of growth, and the red shows reductions in a particular segment. So it has all of the industry segments for sales tax broken out, and it provides a six-month look. And this is this is looking year over year for each one of these months. So for retail trade, out of the six months, it was only down two months. And you the biggest hit that we're seeing right now is wholesale trade and telecom. So we look at wholesale trade, those are building supplies and materials. And it's in the month of December, January, and February, really, all of the months are in double-digit decreases. And December, it hit a high of thirty percent, and in February, it's still a twenty percent year-over-year decrease. In telecom, we're seeing even larger percentage drops. It just doesn't equate to the same amount in dollars. Our largest taxpayer is in the wholesale trade, and that's where we're seeing the lo- largest dollar decline.
Stephanie, I have a question. I see a lot of this development that goes on with apartments, and I see all the lumber and and things of that nature that come in from out of town. Is there any way we can ask them or encourage them to shop San Marcos with their for their lumber and things like that?
I don't know if there's anything that we would have in our, like, toolbox to be able to do that. And I'm I'm looking at Ms. Ednaud this, and she's she's shaking her head no, too. So I don't know that we would have anything in our toolbox to say to do that.
But he said ask, not require.
We could, we could, we can ask. We can always ask, but there won't be anything that would necessarily probably have any teeth to to make them do that. Because, of course, depending on what type of developer, you know, he or she is, then it's a matter of sometimes they get bulk and that kind of thing. And so they're able to get that better pricing in order to be able to make their, you know, their economics and financials meet. But it doesn't hurt to ask, and we can definitely do that. Just wanted to make sure there's realistic expectations that we probably couldn't require them. But we can always ask.
I'm recalling a memory, and it may have been Amazon, or it was something where there was an economic incentive that, I think it was Steve Parker, that was like, yeah, the the lumber or the the concrete or aggregate had to be like within a certain mileage.
Maybe part of their three eighty?
Yeah, it was part of, it was part of the economic agreement.
Which which for those developments, we typically don't unless it's, you know, like a a light C project or something like that, where there's a something that's coming to council for approval. But most of the multifamily, single-family even, there's not a lot of, like, incentives that happen. But for developments, I think we can, like, commercial and things like that.
Well, and if there's a economic development agreement, which means they're asking us for something, we can ask them for something. We just have to remember, most of the businesses that come here don't ask for incentives. They they pop up all over the place. And I don't know that we have that much interaction, except assuming they're getting their building permits properly and all that. But but other than that, we're not. But but we know who they are.
Thank you. No, I think it's a good question. It's a good thought. You know, we definitely, I know we're all trying to say, hey, we need to spend money local, you know? And so trying to do the best that we can to try to keep those dollars local at any juncture that we can. Thank you.
This slide shows our top fifteen sales taxpayers, and the total collections that we've received year-to-date compared to the same time period last fiscal year. So the last fiscal year from our top fifteen sales taxpayers, we collected four point nine million dollars. We've collected four million dollars from those same taxpayers. So we've almost seen a one million dollar decrease just from our top fifteen sales taxpayers. What the slide also shows are the industry or the trade that each are associated with. So we have a lot of retail trade, our largest being being in the wholesale trade, and that is where we're seeing the the largest dollar amount decrease year-over-year comparison. Now to discuss our our self-tax contingency plan, our our financial policy has certain triggers that require the city to act when our sales tax is not coming in as it as it was budgeted to come in. Through the first four months, our sales tax is about seven hundred thousand dollars less than where we thought we would be at this point of the year. If if the trend continues like this, like we discussed on that forecasting slide, we'll finish a little over two million dollars short of of our budget. So the city is currently implementing a two and a half million dollar cost savings measure. Those measures include suspending capital outlay. I mentioned on that one slide that some of that capital outlay was frozen. Two hundred thousand dollars of that million dollars had already been spent. There was about eight hundred thousand dollars that wasn't spent, so that's been frozen. We're identifying vacancy and turnover savings. We're implementing a managed hiring freeze. This is something that has just been is in the process of being implemented. And e- every director will get with their assistant city manager or city manager on a quarterly basis to identify which of the vacancies they have, and which are mission-critical that need to be filled, and which positions could remain vacant for a little longer to increase those vacancy savings, to help get us to that two and a half million dollar number. And we're also identifying operational savings as they as they occur. So today, we we've saved a little over one point three million dollars just out of the suspending the capital outlay and identifying the operation operational savings. We've already experienced some salary savings as well. So with the with the adding on the managed hiring freeze, we feel like we're going to be able to get to that two and a half million dollar number.
So sometimes you hear that there's a perception out there that, once the budget's approved, that we just stay the way that it is, and we just go full force in spending money. And it's not necessarily the way it happens. It's a very diligent monitoring process. We have to tighten our belts, just like you would your own personal budgets at home, when we see that, hey, we're not getting the revenues. And so these are things, we have the financial policy that states what we have to do in the instances where things don't come in as planned. However, we have been very, very conservative and aggressive when we see anything trending, that a lot of times we'll implement cost-saving measures even before they're triggered by that financial policy. And so this hiring freeze is an example of one of those things where we don't really, we're not really at that trigger yet, but we're doing it just to try to be as diligent as we can, and try to get those savings earlier, rather than having to try to do it at the end of the year, when we're in a more dire situation. So so that's why I want to commend our departments on really trying to look and see how we can hold the line on things, and make sure that we're, you know, having some cost-saving measures and cutting costs where we can to try to get us through this lull.
Well, I was I was bragging on the city recently about when when COVID happened, and no sales tax from the malls and and other places. And I said, one of the ways that we survive that without any layoffs or anything, is from the minute we saw that something bad was happening, that the city management team went into overdrive.
Yes.
And that's how we did it, is seeing it early and taking immediate action. So it was good then, it's good now. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll transition from discussing the sales tax into property tax. And we're beginning with the current year property tax and some of the changes that have taken place. The biggest of which, for our residents, is the state of Texas Proposition Four, where the state had a record surplus, as you probably know, in this last biennium, and they invested eighteen billion dollars in a property tax cut package for school districts, which reduced the operating tax rate for school districts, and it increased the exemption from forty thousand to one hundred thousand dollars. And what this chart shows is the pre-proposition four tax levy on the average homestead value home, and the post-proposition four tax levy. And as you can see, the the total tax that a resident would pay decreased by about a mi- yeah, a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars annually, which was all generated by the San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District, the reduction in that tax component because of the investment the state made. This slide shows for how a property tax is divided for that average value home between the different taxing jurisdictions. What it shows is for every dollar of property tax, forty-four cents goes to the school district, thirty-seven cents comes to the city, eighteen cents goes to Hayes County, and one cent goes to the county special road district. And one thing to touch on here is Proposition Four, if you look at what the school district's tax rate was pre-proposition four to what it is post-proposition four, it decreased by fourteen cents. So that that was a huge reduction in their tax rate from pre to post-proposition Now we're just going to do a a little benchmarking on some different metrics that come into play when you look at property tax, and compare us to some of our peer cities, beginning with medium household income. And what this chart is showing, the city of San Marcos is in green, the rest of the cities are in blue, and the the lowest is College Station, and that's at fifty-one thousand dollars. The highest is Sugar Land, and that's at a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar median income. The the orange or yellow line is the Texas average household income. So it's not the average of the peer cities, it's the for the state of Texas. So for the state of Texas, the average income is seventy-two thousand, and then you can compare that to the city of San Marcos, which is fifty-two thousand. One thing that we noted last year when we were looking at these as well, is those first three cities have universities within them, and that's part of the reason why you see the lower median income, when you have a lot of the students that are living within the city, working within the city as well. The next thing we'll take a look at is the home values across those same cities. The these are the median home values, and with the median, we're just taking off the lowest value and the highest value until you arrive what's in the middle. And so Bryan has the lowest median home value across our peer cities at two hundred and sixteen thousand, and Austin has the highest at five hundred and ninety-three thousand. The Texas average value is two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the city of San Marcos is at two hundred and eighty-five thousand. So San Marcos is higher than what the Texas average is, and it is the third lowest across our peer cities. Now, we we took the fiscal year twenty twenty-four tax rates for each one of these peer cities, and applied it to those median values that were on that previous chart, to come up with what the median household annual city property tax would be. The lowest is in Bryan, as low as thirteen hundred and fifty-one, and the highest is in Austin, twenty-six hundred dollars. On this, we we aren't showing the statewide average, we're just showing the average across our peer cities. And the average across our peer cities is seventeen hundred and ninety dollars, and the city of San Marcos is at seventeen hundred and twenty-one. This is just the tax that is paid to the city.
This is their rate times the median household price.
Yes, ma'am. So we're going to continue talking about the property tax rate, and get into a little bit about the the balancing act that we touched on a little bit envisioning between the operations and the debt component. Those are the two components of the tax rate. If if the tax rate remains the same, and either the operation and the operations component of the tax rate decrease, then the debt component will increase. And the same in reverse is true as well. What this slide shows is what a penny means for the for on the operational side of the tax rate. So for a penny is worth an estimated amount of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-five. That is the equivalent of eight police officers or firefighters, the city's entire code compliance division, fourteen lane miles of paving, which is about two neighborhood paving projects. It's half of the library's budget, that's including salaries, programs, and materials and everything, and the cost of installing a new playground at City Park. On the other side is the the debt side, one cent is equal to eleven point one million in capital projects. So it's one cent still has the same value, that eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, it's just the eight that eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand can fund eleven point one million dollars of projects as a one-time bond issue.
That's a payment on twenty, one payment of twenty years?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And just to show what eleven point one million dollars could buy, a new Fire Station Seven on the north side of town, Hopkins Street improvements from Moore to Guadalupe, the Wallace Edition Off-Site Drainage Improvement, or Sunset Acres Phase Three, the Downtown Alley Reconstruction Phase One and Two, and a third of the Purgatory Creek Channel Improvements of Phase One. So that is that is the impact of shifting a penny from operations to the debt side, or from debt to operations. It's equivalent of of what you see on those slides. So we we've talked a lot about the general fund operations side, and we went over the assumptions that went into the general fund operational forecast. Those same assumptions are Those same assumptions are used on the debt side as well. And in addition to that, um, we've, we're providing what the, um, the, um, how large of the capital improvement plan will be over the next few years. So in twenty twenty-four, the estimated amount is seventeen point two million, and twenty-five, thirty-six point five million. And then twenty-six and beyond, twenty million dollars. City Council has already provided guidance that to use the general fund's capacity to help with stormwater management, since it does not have the capacity, and so that is included in twenty-four and twenty-five. The assumption is that the tax rate will remain the same at the current sixty point three cents. And any tax rate not used for debt service would go to operations. Uh, the taxable valuation increases are the same as that revised forecast that, that we showed on the general fund's operating side. So, uh, what this slide is showing, it, it begins by showing what we're estimating to be the taxable value for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four. This does not include any of those tax increment financing zones. It shows what the estimated debt service will be. This is including all of our current debt service for, uh, capital improvement projects that we've already, um, started and funded, as well as those assumptions on the previous slide. Our current, uh, tax rate for debt is fifteen point eight-three cents. So that maximum current debt rate, that is what the maximum annual debt service that we can make, you add our current debt rate of fifteen point eight-three cents. And to the right of that, where you see the amount over/under, if there's parentheses around a number, that means that we're short that amount of money. So for twenty twenty-five, we'd be short about five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars on the debt side. And that's equivalent, it shows the additional tax rate that would be needed. And when, when you're looking at the split between operations and debt, where the, um, what the debt split would be after making that change. So, all, yes, ma'am.
Is this assuming no additional debt or the same amount of debt as you go into these future years? The same amount that we do every year?
So as we go into the future years, in twenty-five is thirty-six point five million, and then in twenty-six and beyond is twenty million.
Okay, I wasn't looking at these two slides together, thank you. And, and that's what we'll, we'll come into later, why that's a, such a big jump. Or what we talked about a month ago? Same stuff?
Some of the projects, the big projects that we have slated for those out years, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Now it's making more sense. Thank you.
And, uh, and just to, um, um, to, to bring the two forecasts together, when we went over the general fund forecast, um, when, when you see these parentheses, these, the shift has already occurred, it's already being assumed in the general fund operating forecast. So, um, these two run hand in hand. This slide, we, we talked a lot about the tax rate split, um, envisioning. This slide, uh, just shows historically what our tax rate split has been and then what we're forecasting it to be based on those, as, the debt issuances on that assumption slide. So in twenty fourteen, we're at about a fifty-fifty split between operations and debt. And twenty twenty-four, we're at a seventy-four, twenty-six split. And then we're estimating to say, to stay in that range between twenty-six and twenty-eight, based on those assumptions. This is, uh, showing the property tax rate split for fiscal year twenty-four across our peer cities. The average debt rate component is forty percent, as, as you can see. The lowest is Austin at twenty percent, and the highest is Georgetown at sixty-five percent. And the, as, as we just discussed, the San Marcos is at twenty-six percent. And just as a point of reference, each city's tax rate is listed in that chart to the right.
And I, we would have asked that, so thank you for having that in there. That was a good move.
Uh, there was a question asked during visioning too, if, if there was a lot of, um, movement of post-COVID when the rates were down, um, and what the debt percent of the tax rate was, if there was some growth there. And so what, that's what this slide shows. So the chart on the left-hand side shows as of fiscal year twenty, what that split was. And you, you can see that it increased by two percent, because the pre-COVID, it was at thirty-eight percent. Post-COVID, it was at forty percent. So on average, our, including the city of San Marcos and our peer cities, the debt component increased by two percent. So there was some additional debt issuances with cities taking advantage of those lower rates. Um, to the right, that just shows it, um, in a different form. Um, it has the fiscal year twenty debt percent, the fiscal year twenty-four debt percent, and then the percent change. And they're just in order from percent change. So Georgetown increased at the highest amount at twelve. Austin at the lowest amount, they actually decreased their debt, uh, percent by four percent, and the average is two percent. And you can see the city there is at one percent. Okay, uh, continuing with information that's related to, uh, the property tax, that's our taxable value history. This, uh, provides a history from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-four. It has our tax rate, which, um, at the highest on this chart is at sixty-one point three cents. And that was the voter-approved rate following the bond election. And currently, we're about a penny less than that at sixty point three cents. You can see the growth in our taxable value from four point five billion in twenty eighteen to nine point five billion in twenty twenty-four, and the percent change for each one of those years.
Is this what we would call our tax base?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
To the right of that is the tax increment financing zone values. And you can see the same information for those, um, tax increment zones. And then to the right of that is what is remaining, and that is the, um, the net taxable value that the city has to operate on. That includes operations and debt. This slide, um, touches on the, the new property taxable value that has been added to the roll over that, those same time period. The five-year average is three hundred and twenty-one million dollars. So you could see for each year how much has been added, a- as well as what that equates to in new revenue. So in twenty twenty-four, we had five hundred and fifty-three million of new value added to the tax roll that equated to three point two million dollars in additional revenue in the general fund. And again, our five-year average growth is three hundred and twenty-one million dollars. To the right of that, it just breaks down the fiscal year new value added between residential and commercial. So there's a total of, um, thirteen hundred and ninety-five either new value added for residential or improvements, that also includes improvements, for a total amount of three hundred and eighty-three million. So the average amount is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. When you look at the commercial, there was thirty new commercials or improvements added to the tax roll at an average amount of four point three million dollars. So it's showing the impact that commercial has in broadening that tax base and reducing the tax, uh, burden from residents. Um, sixteen, it takes sixteen houses on average to equal one commercial. And w- w- um, at the last city council meeting, the city council approved the, um, the first reading of, of the Buc-E's, Economic Development Agreement. If that were to go through using the taxable value with, with Buc-E's, which is a fifty million dollar investment, that's equal to a hundred and eighty-two houses. So, um, you can certainly get a commercial development that, that will come in that is far greater than what the average is you're seeing here of four million dollars.
This is one thing that we've really wanted to make sure, again. I think sometimes people have a certain feeling about commercial development, you know, or industrial or whatever it is. And so we just wanted something that could illustrate why it's impactful, so that when you're talking with your neighbors and you're talking with your constituents, that you can say those things as far as, look, this is why it helps you ultimately, um, and this is how we can try to really give you the property tax relief that we all would like to see happen in San Marcos, is by having these greater taxpayers come into the system. Then that helps to relieve the burden off of you.
Helps with property tax, brings in more sales tax, and maybe helps carbon footprint or people just quit driving out of town to go get X, Y, Z.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate this and y'all bringing it up in, um, visioning, um, because to your point, I think it's helpful to explain to our neighbors. Um, I think having like, maybe like a one-pager that explains it also what the mayor said that we could share, because after visioning, we did have some, some neighbors like, oh my gosh, you guys are gonna develop the whole town and, oh, you know, whatever. Um, but I do think having that, but also ways that we can, um, advocate for, you know, having businesses that align with our, uh, neighbors' kind of, uh, you know, vibe, like the vision for San Marcos, like, stuff like that, like, are we gonna make sure we're bringing in, um, things that are ethical and environmentally conscious, stuff like that?
And, and, and that's, that's the beauty of when you do the three-eighty agreements, is because then you're really trying to attract the types of, of developments that we want here. You know, it doesn't mean that we just say, okay, we will take anything as long as you're gonna pay us a lot of taxes. There, there are, you know, rules, standards, value systems that we have as a community. And so this doesn't mean a carte blanche, just to say, hey, anything that wants to develop, we still have a say in those things that we want to incentivize to bring here, that bring the types of jobs, benefits, the things that you need. So people don't have to drive out of this, out of the community to go and make a living, to be able to feed their families. So it's trying to look at that holistically in terms of how that overall improves the quality of life for our San Markans and, and for people that are locating here for the future.
I sit and listen to, at different meetings that I'm in, they talk about all the traffic congestion from here to there. I went to a workshop on economic development in Elgin a number of years ago. And they said, well, the number one thing we need to solve our transportation problem is economic development in Elgin so people can work here and not have to drive to Austin.
Right, so it's like, kinda like.
There's that, yeah.
It's, it's all cyclical.
Right, I appreciate what you said, like the standards, value systems, and the types of jobs and benefits. It's like, we talk about it in chunks and bits and pieces when we talk about what we have in our toolbox to make that happen. Um, but having maybe like a one-page or something where we can just give info snacks, you know, like my info snacks. Y'all did a good, y'all, I see y'all, your info snacks.
That was, that was courtesy of Hayden, so.
Uh, I think that's so powerful for our neighbors to see that trust fall with us, because we're not, we're not trying to do dirty, we're China.
Seeing the bigger picture, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, all of us love San Marcos, we want the best for San Marcos, it's not.
All of us love San Marcos, you know, it, none of us are trying to make San Marcos into something that, you know, none of us are proud of. And so it's, it's, but it is trying to look at, how do we turn the dials to be transformative enough that really helps us to be sustainable long-term? You know, not like this thing that we're having to go from year to year to try to see how we're keeping up with growth. We're able to really be in charge of our destiny as we go forward and not make it so burdensome on our residential taxpayers.
Well, and that's why we, we need to make sure, and I think we have a good land development code. So those people come in, if they don't need a zoning change, make sure that they're good neighbors. And those that do want a good zoning change, look how much time we spend up here. When you've got light industrial wanting to go in next to a neighborhood, either sometimes maybe not approve it or make sure that there's as many safeguards in as we can. But I'm kinda surprised that we haven't gone there, maybe you did in a roundabout way, is what a dollar in sales tax brings in, and it costs you about a buck twenty for residential, and about eighty cents for commercial, and about forty cents for industrial as far as the expenses.
For providing the services, is that what you're talking about?
Exactly. And that right there, whenever I tell people that, that gets their attention, because they go, hmm, huh. Yeah, I can see that. And, and I, I have, they have those numbers off some, but I think the point is there.
Right.
And so anytime I can make that point with folks, I do.
And, and I think we make the point, but we don't necessarily show the numbers, like what you're saying. You know, that really helps to quantify the data aspect of being able to say, look, this is what, this is how that's derived. So, um, that's good feedback, and it's stuff that we can take into consideration as we're developing, um, stuff for the future.
Or the commercial, you know, they're paying property tax in the school district, but they don't have, you know, there's no children from that commercial building going to school, it's just adding money into it, and then.
Sometimes that comes back to bite you in the recapture, though.
True, true.
As long as, I, the way I understand it is, is the recapture hurts us when it's development that doesn't, that would, that's more residential.
And doesn't have a child count.
And doesn't have a child, yes, exactly. So, uh, so the commercial, um, Dr. Cardona is actually on our, at Economic Development San Marcos, or he was. Now I think they have, there's a, there's another representative, but he was part of, you know, who looked at the Buc-E's incentive and was very supportive of it, because again, commercial doesn't hurt, it's, it's the residential without children that, that hurt.
There's some tax base increase, it's not as big an influence.
Right.
Now, my understanding was, and maybe I'm wrong, that, uh, apart, I'm looking at apartments a little bit different than what I used to, that they bring more property tax in a residential neighborhood.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Per, per square foot, yeah.
And use less water, and that's the other thing about, you know, commercial and industrial, they, they become a consumer for our utilities to help offset, uh, u- utilities with our residential. What was that ratio you gave again, about Buc-E's was like a hundred and eighty homes, or what was it?
Yeah, if, if you look at the, um, the average residential improvement, they're two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And compare that to what the taxable value of Buc-E's would be with that fifty million dollar investment, it, it would take a hundred and eighty-two homes to equal one Buc-E's.
And, and the other part of that too, and it's something we've been pointing out, was it's not just the value of those hundred and eighty homes, it's that we provide less services there, so we get a greater percentage of that also.
That's, yes.
You know, and so it's not just the, the valuation of itself, it's the services and the amount of money revenue generated from that.
Yeah, the sales tax, but then also the jobs, you know.
Yeah, I wasn't even going there with the rest of the economics.
So, I mean, thinking about all of that, how that, that has such a, a big impact, Mr. Gleason, as, as you're pointing out.
You, you know, the great thing about that sales tax, like, vast majority of it's gonna be from outside residents putting their sales tax here.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm still thrilled about that, congratulations.
And, and as, uh, Ms. Ibarra likes to say, is that everything begins with a visit, too. I mean, and, and there was a really nice article that I came across here recently that talked about that and talked about the fact that that spurs economic development, it, you know, it spurs people who actually locate in the community, those kinds of things, spend money. So it's, it really is, it starts with a visit and then it goes into all the other elements.
That's how we got one of our longstanding businesses, is they were coming up here on the weekends and back to Houston to work and says, well, why don't we just move the company up here, we'd be here in San Marcos seven days a week. Good conversation.
The last thing related to, uh, property tax that we're gonna discuss are property tax exemptions. And we, uh, began with, uh, just the current exemptions that city council's already approved. And it, it shows a historical, um, impact, as well as forecasting what that'll look like into the future. You can see in the jump from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three, that's when the most recent change took effect, where we increased the sixty-five and older from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand and created a fifteen thousand homestead. In twenty twenty-two, the, the total, say, it would be revenue lost to the city or tax savings to the resident was three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, when the new change took effect, it went from three hundred thousand to one million dollars, or it increased by seven hundred thousand. And just based on the growth of, um, homesteads that we're seeing, it looks like we're estimating that it'll increase by about a hundred thousand dollars a year. So you, in twenty twenty-five, we're estimating that it'll be one point three, and then you can see it grown to one point four, one point five, and you, about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, in the background, that's just the total exempted value. That's, when you see the dark green color in the background, just the total value that is exempted. So in fi- in fiscal year twenty-two, there was just a little less than, um, fifty million dollars of value exempted. And by the time that you, um, get, when you jump to twenty twenty-three, that jumped up to about a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. So that's just showing the total value. So that's just showing the total value that's exempted, as opposed to the revenue that, that was, that was reduced to the city and a savings, tax savings to the residents. We talked a lot at visioning about different property tax relief options. This, this was a summary chart that, that was provided during visioning, and what it has some different options that, that we discussed. Those were the tax ceiling, or a freeze is what a lot of people refer to it as, five thousand increase in the exemption, a ten thousand increase in exemption, reducing the tax rate by a penny and reducing by two cents. And what it shows is for the homestead, what the impact it would, it would have on them, or the tax savings that a homestead would have from that, so a tax ceiling freeze wouldn't have any impact on just a, a regular homestead. It also shows what over sixty-five is, and that's seventy-two dollars, that's the savings if a, in year one, if a tax ceiling or freeze were implemented.
And this is all if we choose to do this.
Yes, if. And the very last column is the, would be the lost revenue from that. So, and we, we provide both a twenty-five and a twenty-eight, because some of these, some of these property tax relief options grow significantly as the years go by, the largest of which is the tax ceiling or the freeze. In year one, it has lost revenue of two hundred thousand dollars to the city. By the time you get to year four, it's two point five million, so it, so you can see the impact as the, you know, from freezing the, the, the tax levies.
These, these are good, clear charts, once, once I'm going, did we decide to do that? And then I went, oh, this is if, so we can make that decision, then it became more clear.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, so much, especially with these exemptions, it does compound significantly, and it doesn't take very long to be five to ten years out, it'd be a fairly large amount of money.
And there, you can't undo any of them, just a reminder, I know you know that, but once they're, once they're granted, they will stay.
This slide just takes that lost revenue that was on the previous slide for both the impact in year one and in year four, and it, and it provides what the, the tax rate impact would be. So, you know, the tax ceiling freeze in year one of the two hundred thousand, it's less than a cent. By the time that you get to year four, it's over two cents, that's the impact to the tax rate, where you would have to increase the tax rate by that amount of money in order to bring in the same amount of revenue that, that would be lost from that particular exemption. And then from there over, it has some equivalent items, so it has the, for the tax ceiling freeze in year four, two and a half million dollars of lost revenue is equivalent to four hundred and twenty-six million dollars of new development. And you remember a few slides back when we, when we discussed what the average new development over that five-year period was three hundred and fifty-one million? So that exceeds what we, our average, you know, by far. And then as you go across, it just has some other equivalent items, so that the two and a half million is equivalent to twenty police officers, or twenty-one firefighters, twenty-eight heavy equipment operators, and thirty-one equipment operators, and it, and it has that for each one of those different options.
That's helpful.
Is there, maybe I missed it, is there a scenario where, what if we kept the property tax rate the same?
Yes, the, the forecast that, that we provided that we went over for the general fund and for the, the debt service.
That's if we kept it the same?
Yes, sir, so this would be if we made any changes to that, yes, sir.
But where it has tax rate impact, so explain that column, what that would mean, is that what we would have to raise it to generate the same amount of dollars?
Yes ma'am.
So that's a huge impact of these increases, if we wanted to raise the same amount of money?
Correct.
Okay. Good question, Ms. Prather.
And again, this is, this is just because council, y'all said, hey, y'all wanted to look at what it looks like? So we're showing you what the impacts would be if we were to do it, so that you can make a more informed decision, given all the stuff that we're telling you.
So before we get to the decision point slide for the general fund, there's some information related to social services and the community development block grant.
Counsel, we've been here ninety minutes, would we like to take a break before we go into the next segment?
Sure.
Seven fifteen, it's seven oh nine now. Yes, it's seven twenty-three, Mr. Lot, please, continue.
And the community development block grant program, and the organizations that receive funding through those programs. The first one is the Human Services Advisory Board. This is actually broken out between two slides. This is just sorted based on the agency and how much money they received over this five-year period that we're looking from fiscal year twenty-twenty through fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. This is the amount of funds that were awarded to each one of these agencies. So if you take the first one, hey, it's Caldwell Women's Center, in twenty, they received sixty-three thousand, and as you go across in twenty-four, they were allocated a hundred thousand, and the total across that time period is three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. On the second slide, it has the total awarded to all of the agencies. So the total general fund awarded has been five hundred thousand dollars, and the city council increased that to, by fifty thousand for the general fund portion in fiscal year twenty-four, so you see that increased to five hundred and fifty thousand. And so the total that the general fund has contributed towards the Human Services Advisory Board is two point five million dollars over this five-year period. We've also used some American Rescue Plan Act funding, and you can see that listed there as well. Over the past three years, we've contributed four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of ARP dollars towards the Human Services Advisory Board. The other block of funding that we have for the social service programs is the Community Development Block Grant, or oftentimes it's just referred to as CDBG. This provides that same information, this is only on one, one slide, and it has each agency or organization and the total amount received. The total awarded across that same five-year period in CDBG funding is four point six million dollars. That's all the information that was going to be provided for those two. If council didn't have any questions, we can continue on with the general fund considerations.
So, are we, I didn't even go all the way to the bottom for the questions yet, but are we going to like contemplate kind of like increasing or decreasing this, just because like we had so much ARPA money that we awarded to these folks during the pandemic of it all, like if there's energy to revisit what we're doing right now?
That's question number nine this evening.
It is, okay, cool, so I didn't go down towards the questions, because I was stressed. And sometimes you all put in extra questions, and I'm like, I'm not even, we're just gonna go into the test without studying.
To answer your question.
Yes, we're gonna, okay, cool, cool, cool. I figured, but just in case.
You know if it wasn't here, one of us was gonna get it on.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We're good.
Oh, we've been finishing so fast, like, I don't know.
Okay, the, this is a summary slide for the general fund. It provides the, for fiscal year twenty-four, what our beginning fund balance is, what the budgeted revenues and expenditures are, and what the ending fund balance is, will, would be if we recognize those revenues and spent the entire budget. And it also shows what the fund balance requirement is, so for fiscal year twenty-four, it's twenty-seven point two million, and we're estimating to finish at thirty-nine point two million dollars, so well above our twenty-five percent fund balance requirement. Then as you go out from twenty-five through twenty-eight, those are those same general fund forecast assumptions that, that we showed on that revised general fund forecast slide. These are just the numbers instead of it being in the chart format. So you can see that the general fund's fund balance does go down in twenty-five and twenty-six, that's just based on the current assumptions. As we go through the budget process, we, we wouldn't bring a budget back to, to city council that would, would use recurring, have recurring expenses exceed revenues, so that is just as we were forecasting it today. The, the next row you see is the available capacity, and that's just taking revenues minus expenses. So for twenty-five, it's, it's red, it means that there is negative capacity, so when you take revenues, there's more expenses than revenues. So it's three point two million dollars short, so there wouldn't be any capacity. When you get up to twenty-twenty-seven, it's positive, the one point six million. So if, if we were going to add a new program, or add one of those property tax relief options, there's capacity there to do it without looking at the programs that we're already adding and having to reduce those to make room for something new. And, and that's, that's really what the revenue loss from property tax relief that next block down is for. It just, again, shows what the impact is. So if we were to, for instance, you take the tax ceiling freeze in twenty-twenty-five, we're already estimated to be short three point two million dollars. If we were to, if council said, I, I wanna do that freeze, that would make us increase that by another two hundred thousand dollars that we would be short.
Question on the twenty-twenty-five column, it's got ending fund balance, and then required fund balance, and it looks like we've got over eleven million dollars there. Is this three million dollars short, assuming we are or are not using that eleven million dollars?
This, this is just looking, this does not assume any use of fund balance to, to cover the shortfall, so.
That's, that's what I thought, but we do have money that we could put towards that if we choose to.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Which means less money going towards the new city hall. Because if council agrees with the same philosophy that you've been doing, anything above our twenty-five percent fund balance, that that goes to cash fund city hall, so it, it would, it would take away from that available.
Anything, or split it?
It was, it was anything above the twenty-five percent amount we were putting towards funding new city hall.
I thought we were splitting that half to new city hall and half to other things.
Yeah, we, we were splitting.
There's a little bit of some for capital outlay and things like that, that are one-time expenditures. It's not recurring expenditures, but a lot, a large part of it, we've been putting towards new city hall.
When I was thinking that it was, that we were splitting it, which would be five and a half, that we had the other five and a half, that we could still cover the three million dollars, that, that's what was in my head.
And, and obviously, if, if we were to be short, that would be our first, our first, you know, priority outside of the new city hall. With us trying to be diligent about trying to save for the new city hall, we're trying to protect that if we can, to try to put that funding towards that.
Do we have a question, a decision point on that?
I, I believe so, on, on how to use the fund balance in excess of twenty-five percent.
Well, it says continue to maintain it, it doesn't say what we're using, oh, wait a minute. Yeah, here it is.
Yes.
Item three, use the fund balance in excess of twenty-five percent to be split between one-time expenses and future city hall. That's where I picked that up.
That's where you picked up this, and, and, and yes, but a majority of it goes to, to say split is not like fifty-fifty, but it's, it's a portion, it's a portion of it, and then the, the majority of it does go to a new city hall.
Well, we'll figure that out here shortly, okay, yes.
So, yeah, you did not, you did not dream it up, you did see it somewhere.
I just thought maybe it was old news and not kind news, okay.
Okay, were there any other questions about this slide before we moved on? That brings us to our decision points for the general fund.
Speaking of decision points.
Yes.
Okay. I knew it was coming sometime, I thought there were a couple more slides, well, we've got the whole enterprise funds after this. Are we ready? Are you asking the questions, or am I asking the questions? It matters not to me.
However you would like to proceed.
Oh, I'm fine if you, if you want to ask the questions, and then I'll, I'll coordinate the discussion up here. Because you may have some additional things you wanna say, and I wanna give you that opportunity.
Okay, the, the first is given the available capacity, create a budget based on the priority list, develop that council visioning. And what we have broken down here are the priority, I, I've visioning, council broke down the budget priority list by priority A, B, and C. And so in the event that, when we get to April, if, if our preliminary values come in better than what we're estimating, and sales tax turn around, and it changes what twenty-five looks like, and, and we have, we're gonna bring in more revenues, and we have that capacity, it's just asking if we want to add these items based on the priority that city council gave us at visioning.
And, and let me add to this, is that, yes, we wanna find out if this is still, you know, just basically, we just wanna affirm that these are your priorities. But secondly, we will look to see what types of funding we can use. So if there's, if we don't have general fund capacity, for example, or something like that, and we have some additional ARP dollars that we can bring to you, because we're looking at the ARP dollars, Mr. Miegel is working very diligently with our departments to make sure, since we're getting to that twenty-twenty-four time period of what we have to have it allocated and, and have something encumbered. So we will be bringing some opportunities to be able to fund some of the stuff, possibly with some outside funding, not just general fund dollars. So we'll make the dollars, in other words, stretch as far as we can, based on what's available.
Yeah, and there's some other opportunity with some of these to get outside funding.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay, so council there, that's the list that we developed at, at the vision workshop, based on, we prioritized, based on the information that staff provided to us, make sure you read those down, don't read them across, because that's not, there, there's no comparison across the first row. And of course, staff is saying, given available capacity, like, do we have the dollars? And this is a yes or no question, right? Okay, and I need to hear, and yes or no is good, if you feel you need to make a statement, that's fine, but I'm hearing a yes from Mr. Prather, all right, oops, wrong one, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Gonzalez is a yes. If you have your microphone on, then the public and everybody will know that you're saying yes. Ms. Gleason is a yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
I, I thought I heard you say yes, thank you, and I'm a yes. Next slide.
The next one is continue to main the fund, maintain the fund balance requirement at twenty-five percent of recurring operating expenses.
I'll jump out there and say, I'm a yes, it's a policy we've had forever, and I.
I'm a yes, too.
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sure, yes.
All right.
Bring back the recommendation for use of fund balance in excess of twenty-five percent to be split between one-time expenses and fu- future city hall.
But not necessarily fifty-fifty.
Correct.
That's what I have learned.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm fine with the mayor.
Um, sure.
I'm good, mayor.
Yeah, sure.
And I'm a yes. Item four?
Four is to keep the tax rate between the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. The, the no new revenue rate is, is the tax rate that will generate the same amount of revenue on properties that are taxed in both years. And the voter approval rate is the highest rate allowed without it going to election.
And I know what those mean, but I don't know what the numbers were last year.
Oh.
That's what my question was on the, well, here's the deal, we kinda like have to keep it somewhere in between those, right?
Yes, this is, this is to provide the maximum amount of flexibility, based on what we're seeing with revenues.
These are significant numbers.
These are significant numbers.
Exactly. So it's going to be in between those. I mean, we always are in between those.
We're always in between. I'm I'm going to give you a different answer and say, I want I want to stay with the tax rate where we are now, if that's possible. Is that a valid answer? Okay.
I mean, if it's keep the tax rate the same, that's what we would put in the budget policy statement and also then make sure our assumptions for revenue assumptions are based on that tax rate.
So folks, you can answer it either yes, we're going to stay legal, or you could actually give me a number, or you can say, keep what we, keep it at the rate that it is.
I'm going to keep the tax rate at the same rate.
Gotcha.
Keeping it the same, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, I'll keep it this, it's the same.
It's okay to say something different? Yeah. I mean, we have a budget, keep it at the same. I don't, I don't know.
Uh, not at all, keep it at the same, but we'll keep it within that range.
So you're saying, yes, keep it in the legal range.
In the legal range, yes, ma'am.
All right.
Keep the same.
We got you.
Keep the same.
Which is not necessarily keep the same range.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so some people did keep the same, some people did the range? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, you're the only one with the range right now.
I really don't care. Like, it's hard for me to contemplate like the long-term impacts of that just a year.
And I think my answer to four also depends on my answer to number five, so.
Exactly, it all, yeah. All goes into that same moment.
I'm letting that, I stated to keep it the same for, yeah, basically means until after maybe we see preliminary tax rules.
Gotcha. It's like the fullness of it all, like, I don't, I'm a psychic, like.
I can come back to it.
Yeah.
So let's let's go to item five. And if nobody wants to jump out there, I'm I'm going to go first and say, looking at the small impact to the the individual property owner, but the size of the impact to the city, and because of that sixty thousand dollar exemption on the school tax rate, which is the highest one of all of them, I think I will pass myself, I want to pass for additional exemptions for this year. And I I think we'll probably talk about it every year. I won't be here forever, but I think council will probably talk about it forever. So I'm I'm going to pass for this year because everybody got the big relief on the school tax thing. So I'm a, I I I'm a, I hate to say I never want to look at something, but right now I probably wouldn't be interested.
Yeah, I'll echo echo those thoughts and views on this as well.
Oh, wait, are you a same?
I agree with you, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just just because the situation for this year, otherwise I'd be looking at it.
Yeah, and I do want to look at it, but, you know, I'm going to be pretty open-minded about that after the expansion of the exemptions from the state for the school district stuff. But that's going to slowly dwindle away over time. The exemption percentage rises, it grows, right? So I want to look at it once we get the preliminaries.
Okay, so you're a yes.
I'm a yes as well, ma'am.
You want to look at it again? Mr. Mendoza was a, a no. Ms. Garza?
Yeah, ditto.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ditto, yes or ditto, no?
Yes.
Okay, that's a yes?
Yes.
You do want to look at it again?
No.
No.
Yeah, she's saying what you said, ma'am.
What I said, I'm sorry.
She's saying for you.
Because I had just, I'm sorry, I'm with you. I'm I'm good. So what we have is one, two, three, four noes and two yeses.
So we will not bring that back.
They'll be put on hold for this year. Uh, next.
Are we going back to number four or are we going to?
No.
Do we need to go back to number four? Oh, we're on number six. But thank you for remembering.
The consensus was four to keep the tax rate the same and not to bring back property tax relief.
Right.
Number six.
For this year.
Yes.
Isn't this chart handy?
Yes, it sure is.
Number six is to consider increasing the debt service component of the tax rate by one percent. And it has the cost there, that five hundred thirty-six thousand, that is the, that would be the amount that would shift from operations to debt. And this would be in addition to what you already saw in our forecast. You know, there's assumptions that that we had on this is the amount of CIP that would be funded each year. This would be in addition to that.
Okay, so it's a a some, it's a loss to M and O.
Yes.
But maybe with some growth and some other things that will.
Correct.
Pick that up.
And I will say, with with where we are right now financially, it may not be the best time for us to do this, but it can be that we're considering if if there is some capacity that that we end up getting.
Yeah.
So if we can plan for it, you know, to try to do that and endeavor to do it, but it's it may not be something that, like, I don't want, if if y'all are okay with this, to be able to say, hey, well, we need to find this, find this five hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in operations to make it happen, I would rather us have some flexibility based on how revenues end up with the end of the of the year.
Yeah, because this fiscal year doesn't start for half a year, over half a year yet.
So if y'all are interested in looking at it.
Look at it and maybe go there.
To see if there's availability to do it, then, I mean, I would be all for us doing that. But if it's something that we can, you know, just have that flexibility, and if we can't afford it, then we're going to put it in M and O.
Because it says consider.
Exactly.
Okay. Y'all word things very carefully, but that's a good thing. Okay, who would like to consider?
I'm a yes, ma'am.
I hear a yes from Mr. Gleason.
I'm a yes as well.
Yes for Mr. Mendoza.
I'm a yes as well, ma'am.
Yes for Mr. Gonzalez.
And yes gives y'all more flexibility.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Yes.
They're they're not going to go lay somebody off just because we said this.
Right.
Ah, I wasn't very confident, right?
No, right. I was writing at the same time.
I'm kidding, I'm a yes.
All right.
That takes us to number seven, continue budgeting revenues based on historical trends. And some background information on historical trends. We typically look at a three to five year, like what we provided with property tax. We looked at the three to five year trend. Each revenue source is looked at independently. So for instance, if you take sales tax, we can't do a three to five look, you know, where we were seeing ten percent plus gains and assume that we're going to have ten percent gain next year when what we're seeing right now is closer to two percent. So each one is looked at independently of one another. We just use a historical reference to the three and five year as a as a guide, and then we got to look at what's currently going on. Like, so for property tax and sales tax, we had to make some adjustments because of the current conditions.
Okay, so, but I'm going to ask the question a little shorter than what I had on the message board. And this is what we talked about last year on sales tax, when y'all said, do you want to keep doing what we've been doing on sales tax? When we had changed what we were doing on sales tax, where we used to budget really super conservative, and every year the sales tax just came in way over, way over, way over. And so y'all adjusted your budget to what those bigger numbers were, and we've done that two, we're in the second year of that or the third?
The second.
And so that was my question is which, which is, I I get the historical trends, but it's what we do with it. And so it looks like maybe with the sales tax going with the higher was, it looked good at the time, but maybe that wasn't the best thing. So I'm I'm still not sure. Do you mean historical, what we've done historically? Or just the historic trend of the numbers, but again, it's what we do with it?
It's it's the three to five year outlook versus saying, oh, we want, no, we don't want to do that. We want to go even more conservative than that, which which has the effect of constraining than what we put in M and O, right? Because we don't, and so that's why, so we're just trying to make sure, is council still comfortable, again, knowing it's a dynamic process? We respond as we need to if things don't come in like we're supposed to, and we go three to five percent or what are the three to five year outlook and do it based on that? Or again, do you want to say, oh, I want to assume that sales taxes only has a one percent growth or two percent growth or three percent growth? So those kinds of of things is what we're asking for you to help us know what your what your preference is.
For sales tax, three percent is, I'm sorry, three years is post-COVID and five years is with COVID, so.
Correct, so that helps to kind of even that out. So that three to five years is, I think, what we would feel comfortable with as far as looking at historical, because again, it's not something that we're going to to get into and then say, okay, you know, we're not going to respond if something shows that it's not coming in as we anticipate. We're going to make those changes.
Is this the best practice with city finance?
Yes, and I I think it's important to note, another is to take into account what's currently going on. With with sales tax, we would not use the three percent or the five percent because those numbers are are a lot higher than what what we're experiencing today. So in sales tax and and the revised forecast we had, that was a two percent year-over-year assumption. In each one of those years, that's all that was assumed. That's on base, and we assume that the outlook most would remain flat. So overall, it would be about a, I think it was a one and a half, one point six percent increase overall. So that's an example of, we look at each each revenue source independently. Some of them, you can just go with the three to five year. Some of them you can't, and sales tax is an example of that.
I'm a yes on this, and mainly because you guys, staff did such a great job during COVID of dealing with what are historical trends, right? Of of being very conservative on your estimates and also being very close to your estimates, as last month showed, as close as you were to estimates. So, yeah, I'm willing to give you some leeway on this, whatever you guys think you need to do, what those historical trends might look like.
Yeah, I I'm with you on that as well, and also just seeing the adaptability and how quickly you'll respond if things do have a downward trend, that we have contingencies, anything else lined up, if those revenues aren't hitting what we were thinking they were going to.
I'm a yes. It's a tool for ease, absolutely.
I'm a yes as well, ma'am.
Ms. Garza?
Yes, sorry.
All right, thank you. I'm I'm for letting the professional staff use what accepted practices are, and I'm there, that's where I am. So it's a yes.
That that takes us to number eight, and if capacity allows increased personnel to adequately support core services. And 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 this would be following the the priorities that city council already set during visioning.
I guess my question on this one is, why wouldn't we? And is there a, what what doesn't get done if we do this if capacity allows? What are we saying no to if we say yes to this? I I I don't understand why this is even a question, honestly.
It's just a question, because if you were to say, hey, I don't want y'all to grow in your personnel, then, and I want you to stay flat, then that's what we would go back as the direction. But if capacity is allowing, right now, we're seeing that revenues aren't coming in at the levels that we would like.
Right.
So we're not going to go and add personnel unless there's capacity, and we just want to make sure council's good with that and of us being able to add personnel if that's available. And of course, it would be in the priority list that y'all talked about.
Yep.
So we would go to the public safety staffing plan and all that stuff first, but that's what we'd be bringing is.
Our screen's gone. It said locking, and now something is gone. Okay, continue.
So that's, so that's what it's asking, is just making sure y'all are good with us growing some of the personnel to support core services.
Okay, I don't think we've ever said no, just no, that, no, we're growing, but we want everybody to work double time and all that. I'm not sure that that we we we've ever done that, and I'm not going to start now.
That only applies to city council members.
What'd you say?
Just kidding, no, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to start drama because I'm bored.
So I'm going to say on this one, yes.
Just us, just council members.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Okay, so we're all yeses on that one, and.
I want everybody to work double at half the price.
It was either double time faster or more hours, and I'm not not going there, not going to ever ask anybody to do that on a continuous basis. Okay, number nine.
Number nine is continue to find the human services advisory board at the current level, five hundred and fifty thousand.
And we've been doing five hundred and fifty, setting aside the ARPA dollars.
It was.
This is the second year?
It was five hundred, and then we've gone up to fifty, and then we did an extra hundred from ARPA that I'm recalling.
So five fifty is actually, we've only done that once.
Yes.
Okay.
And that was done this year for the first time, wasn't that increased?
Yes, because last year y'all said, let's go ahead and increase that, and so y'all did fifty, and then out of general fund, a hundred out of ARPA.
Right, but ARPA dollars are.
They'll go away after twenty-twenty-six.
They're they're not in play on this one, which will be just five fifty?
Not now, but again, Mr. Mr. Meagle, like he is.
He's always ready.
Hello, Hayden Meagle, Director of Administrative Services. Um, no, it's really not available past this current year because we have to have it under contract.
Right, right.
And we can't have.
I mean, that option isn't there anymore. It's gone.
That that's what I was thinking, which is okay. I mean, that's what I was presuming, so.
Yeah.
It's five fifty is it, it, that's the number that we're considering. There's not any other money. It will be this.
Correct.
Or not.
Or or general, more general fund money if y'all choose to to do that. Correct.
I'm fine with the five fifty for now. You know, maybe we may want to look at that next year after we lose that additional money that we've thrown at those services the last three years. But I'm at five fifty for the sure.
Okay.
I'm confused. So we do have the money to contemplate for right now? Not for MARPA.
So I received an update from Ms. Griffith yesterday, and the one hundred thousand that was included in this fiscal year will actually be awarded in December of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So it'll actually go under contract right before the deadline.
Okay, but but the point before is, we don't have any time to make this, to to put more ARPA dollars in something that starts October one.
For next October, exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to establish, is it's not fair.
To the process timeline, we don't have any additional time to include.
Well, and I think most ARPA dollars have been allocated other places, too, so.
They have. I'm going to, I'm going through it right now, but we'll be coming back with a reallocation.
I know, I know there'll be drips and drabs that can pull together, but I'm I'm good with the five fifty. That's where I am. So waiting to hear from others.
I'd be willing to increase it.
Only thing I'm going to tell you with that is you haven't gotten to question number eleven. And that's going to be another ask that we're going to have to do to take out a general fund in order to keep our CDPG positions funded. Because our CDPG positions, some of them are funded out of some grants that are going to go away. And I know Ms. Anandis is willing to talk about those, like the disaster recovery and the mitigation funds. Those are now, either the positions go away, or we keep those funded, but then it has to come out of general fund because it's outside of our entitlement. So that's for another, that's going to take another hundred and forty thousand dollars in order for us to keep those positions afloat.
That goes towards providing dollars and administering the programs, not actual money that will go into the bank account of a nonprofit.
That's correct, so it won't necessarily go to the programs, but it's still, it's general fund money that we have to find to administer the programs.
Yeah, I was reading ahead. That's why I'm thinking, we we increase to the five fifty. This, we, our basic five hundred that we've been for a long time. We went to the fifth, extra fifty for this year, and that's why I'm willing to stay there. And maybe if times are good, and I don't know if I'll be here or not, but maybe council will consider upping it for the following year. But I'm I'm at a, I'm at keeping it at five fifty for now.
So that's the only thing. I wouldn't be opposed to you increasing, you know, if we needed to. It's just that I am concerned because of the transitioning of CDPG staff to general fund, that hundred and forty that's going to be required to administer programs. And so, because they handle the HSAB and CDPG, and that's got to come from somewhere. So that's my only caution to you when you're looking at this.
That's why I'm going to keep it.
Well, I'd like to keep it at five, five fifty, ma'am.
Prather, I would love to do the same thing. I'd like to make it eight hundred thousand dollars. I I love that. I would just love to. Unfortunately, right now, I have to stick with five fifty. That's.
I would want to increase it. I feel like you guys already know what I'm going to say again. I've asked.
You gave us the stats.
That you contemplate the connection between our neighbors' direct, basic needs and very important things like public safety, when people are struggling to get their essentials, crime increases, family violence increases. So I would, to me, it just makes sense to increase it if we're contemplating the fullness of the strategic plan. the strategic plan, um, especially seeing statistics that we're hearing about or I think, I don't, I haven't looked at the stats all this, it was released, but, um, coming from specific neighborhoods, concerns, it's like when we contemplate the root of all those things that we don't want our neighbors to experience, it all comes down to direct basic needs. Um, so I mean, we can try and funnel all this money towards safety, but it's like, are we funneling money towards the root causes? I don't know, right? I mean, I do know because the literature indicates what I'm saying, it's facts, it's not, um, fiction.
The only other thing I will say on that, Councilmember Garza, is that there, as Mr. Meagle talked about, he's doing a sweep of ARP funds to make sure that everything that's been allocated is going to be utilized by the timeframe. If not, then we're going to bring those things to you. So there may be an opportunity for council to contemplate and consider other programs that you would like to fund. One of those things, uh, that y'all have already said that you want and, and is priority is the diversion center money. So that is something that I know does go towards some of the efforts that, um, that we've talked about. And so there, there can be an opportunity for us to look at having some of the money that, that Mr. Meagle would be bringing back. And we have to bring that back here pretty soon to go towards some of those other programs that, that you're talking about. It doesn't necessarily have to be this funding source since we're in a, a little bit of a, you know, constraint right now with general fund.
Right, I appreciate the energy, um, I just, I think our neighbors are in constraints too. Um, but I will say, uh, I, like on that note, just talking about the fullness of the budget, I really hope that for things like the diversion center, now that I think we have the, now we qualify for those federal grants, I think there's plenty of funding. I mean, uh, again, I've said this since twenty twenty, subscribe to all these federal funding opportunity newsletters. And there's so much money out there to be put towards stuff like that. So if, I mean, it's just June and I at this point with the energy to increase it. But I just, uh, I just want to like name that we should try endeavor to be funding all this other stuff, um, with grant opportunities if possible. Um, to free up money for stuff like our neighbors' direct basic needs.
So and, and Mr. Meagle's now going to be overseeing the grants. And so as he's looking at ARP and grants together, then that's something that, that we can work through. The other thing is that, um, we met with Ms. Karina Boston Pinalis and her, and her team. And they're going to be putting some really great grant workshops out there too for nonprofits and other businesses and things like that. So that's the second part of, um, the, the, the efforts that we've done at, at the city where we funded, you know, having Texas State do the, the grant workshops over at, um, the library is now, okay, so now what? Well, now we can put them up with, with Karina's, you know, people to be able to say, okay, how can we then go and help and make sure that we're getting the grant seeking and all the stuff that we need? And have then Hayden be able to work with Ms. Valenzuela to be able to work on what kinds of things we as the city, if we're, if it's programs that we can do, how we can get involved in those.
Well, I'm, I'm counting on some outside money to take care of one of the items that used to come through HSAB, which will give us another forty-five thousand dollars. That it, it won't increase to five fifty, but it'll be forty-five more for everybody else who applies.
Correct.
And so it's an effective forty-five thousand dollar increase.
Again, I appreciate the energy, I think that it's important to name that private and foundational grants, um, while super important to nonprofits, it does not compare to the deliverables required, but also the support given when you have federal grants. I mean, it intertwines, um, data collection, which could be used for, we think, long-term. We're always talking about, oh, mental health, mental health, mental health, and then we're like, well, we don't have the data to explain the, the fullness of the need. And I've heard so many times, like, we know all these needs, but we don't have the data to support it. And that's why we don't seek other opportunities or that's why here, we're just like, I don't even think that's an issue. But it's like, it is an issue if we tip data, we see that. Um, so I just want to name that, I, 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 I appreciate, I feel like it's, it's progress, gradual, but nonetheless, towards kind of, uh, infrastructure to help our nonprofits. But again, that's just like, um, like a drop in the bucket. Um, and that's assuming that these nonprofits have the capacity to even implement programs with supplemental grant fundings when we know, or anybody who follows nonprofits knows that a lot of those private and foundational grants do not cover operational support.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like, sounds really nice, but when you like dive deep into it, it's kind of, uh, not as magical.
Well, and, and, and you're right, I mean, it's, it's very complex. And I think we've been weaving different parts of the puzzle, you know? And so having, um, the data that we have through the police department now with Ms. Chumchow and Patty Hom who helps on some of the crime, you know, she does more of the evidence-based policing and, and helping with them with that. Uh, but I think having her, having a more robust grants program that can look at this, try to get our EEOP, um, which Ms. Basic has assured me is going to happen, uh, by the March first, so that we can have that ready to go. Um, we, we're going to be applying for a safer grant for fire and that's important. We have some other things we're looking at for Department of Justice grants for PD to do some of the things.
Is this worthy of a work session instead of right now?
Well, actually, um, Mr., uh, well, not Mr., but Chief Standridge is going to be doing a, um, a work session with a mental health update. And so we can talk about some of that during that time.
I'm talking about just, uh, social service agencies, the needs in our town and having a discussion about that and opportunities. The, it's the things that Ms. Garza's talking about now, but this is one of many. And I think just focusing on this at a work session, even if it was only thirty minutes, would, would be better. We could all come, we can all come prepared.
Are you talking about question ten?
No.
Well, I think you kind of are identifying.
Oh, it's kind of a collapse.
Yeah, it kind of will be.
Yeah, and, and so I was going to throw one thing else out there, you know? Um, I don't mind us kind of making a decision now, this early on in the process about the property tax relief thing. But this is another one where I think we could discuss that after we get preliminary rolls. I would be open for that, that, um, you know, if we'll get to see what the sales tax and preliminary rolls look like. Then maybe we could throw another twenty-five thousand at it. So I don't know if there's a couple of my colleagues willing to potentially look at that after we get preliminaries.
Well.
And make it part of a discussion as a work session.
Well, and if we figure out exactly what we want to fund, we, we have funded, especially the year that we didn't question stuff, we funded some things that do not work towards the, the, the items that, the things that Ms. Garza's talking about. I think we can spend the money that we have better.
And, and y'all have done that in the past, I mean, prior councils have where it's been, okay, we want to use these for focus areas. We want to use them for downtown or we want to do it for that. So like if there were mental health or some of the things that y'all are talking about that you want to give priority to, then those are things that then Ms. Ednandis and Ms. Griffith would work with those, those groups, you know, that, that are going to be submitting funding to make sure to say, these are the target areas, these are the focus areas that council has established. And so this is where, who are going to get the priority when it comes to funding. So that, that is another option if that's, uh, council's.
Yeah, and I wasn't even talking about what we want to do with it. I was just throwing out that that dollar figure is not a huge amount, that, um, discussing this early on.
Can we do questions nine and ten? May we have a work session to talk about that? Because I think we can further refine our HSAB, um, to, to narrow things down to focus on what's important and related to those basic human needs.
So, so tell me, uh, I think, yes, we can absolutely do it. I just want to make sure I have clarity on what your expectation would be in terms of what, what staff would prepare for that work session.
Uh, two, two things, when do they start the application process for the HSAB?
Ms. Ednandis, you want to?
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services, that'll start in the summer.
Okay, so we would have preliminary rolls by then.
Yep, and CDBG will start in the spring.
Great, um, I think it would be helpful, at least for me, to contemplate both the questions. And thank you, Mr. Pleson, for making that connection with the other one because I think it overlaps. Is, um, you know, that awesome chart that you all made? I think it's the two charts, no, three charts. Um, if, if I could see, um, all of it kind of like more, uh, merged.
spreadsheet?
Yeah, but.
So we can work it.
You want, you want, uh, the two charts that show HSAB and CDBG funding, is that what, those two spreadsheets?
Yes.
Okay.
But then also like there's, I think there's kind of like a missing component. Because I, I also think it's important for us to see, like, take a zoom out and see all the progress that we have made, um, pouring into these different nonprofits and what they're doing. Because some of these nonprofits, like, they tackle different parts of the direct basic needs. But like, and where it says total ARPA awarded, like, that's just like chunked. Um, it's not, I know some of them overlap with those others, right? So it would be helpful to me to see that and maybe just like a blurb or a link to the app where it could be like, okay, Outsiders Anonymous, I vaguely remember, I think that's like, um, uh, drug interventions, they do like, um, they have like the.
We need, we need a link to that year's, uh, applications.
Mm-hmm.
To, to the, to the page with the links to the applications.
And I think, and so we can, we can put information, I think, together on HSAB, CDBG, ARPA and what things have been funded. I think that's, that's fine. The other thing is Mr. Staff has been working on trying to develop, um, um, a partnership with Syna Core for the opioid money. So I mean, so there's other, there's other things that need to come into the equation. Because I, I think we look at it and we look and say, okay, this is all that we're doing.
That we need to look at all of that together.
That's, that's there.
And the HSAB policy of how things work.
Yeah.
That we've worked over a couple of times, but I think we can still do better.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, I know, so, again, like, I'm not trying to sound like a hater, like, I'm, I don't want to be dismissive of a lot of work that has been happening just like over the last two years, I think even. Um, the diversion center chief spearheading like the bat, um, getting everybody talking to each other for like the first time in a really long time. Um, but it would be cool even to contemplate like that part, right? So it's like, are we, like, we have all these awesome stuff, they just presented about the mental health court. But it's like, one thing that I as a policymaker also want everybody else to know is like, uh, yeah, it's like, we have awesome success stories, but those people working in the mental health court, like, acknowledge we're a resource-starved, uh, entity and it was like pretty difficult to get those people what they need to help them be successful. So it's like, it just helps connect the dots, what I'm saying is.
So just help y'all connect the dots in terms of all the external partnerships and funding opportunities that, that the city provides.
Because if somebody used to get fifty thousand dollars from HSAB and for the next year or two, they can get money from someplace else, then I'm a, we've effectively added that dollar amount back into HSAB for others, staying within that five fifty.
Okay.
And so I kind of was using that knowledge to say, I can stay with the five fifty, knowing that for the existing people, there's bigger pieces of the pie available.
That, that are going to, just from different funding sources.
If there was nothing else available, I'd see, I'd be saying increasing it.
Right.
Because I'm the one up here for years has said we need to increase it and personally, I wish we based it on population. I said that before, so, anyway.
I appreciate the energy and willingness to, yes, talk about this.
We can, we can do a work session for it.
Okay. Do we need to put eleven in that one or do you want us to go and make a decision on that this evening? Because I'm ready to say yes on that one.
I mean, I think if, if y'all.
On eleven?
Yeah, I think we, we can just, we can focus on nine and ten if y'all are willing to make a decision on eleven. I mean, that's, that's to have somebody to be able to manage that program.
And that's pending no other CBD, uh, CDBG grants, potential funding that might come in in the future to help administer other stuff too?
I mean, this is.
Hernandez has answers.
Let's, let's, let's let Ms. Ednandis talk about it, yes. I am here with some answers. So we have always been a CDBG entitlement community, we get entitlement money. That's that seven hundred thousand dollars that, uh, Mr. Locke had on the screen earlier. Pre-two thousand fifteen floods, we had two staff members in that division, an administrator and a coordinator, and they managed that grant. As we got the.
From those dollars?
Yes, they were, they're mostly grant-funded. If they're doing anything else or, you know, taking vacation.
Disaster recovery, MIT.
No, entitlement. Only talking, I'm talking about twenty fourteen, we're talking twenty fourteen. Two people mostly grant-funded, mostly funded by the grant that we get, that's seven hundred thousand. Following the floods, we got DR and MIT. And the administration of those grants was so intense that we ended up hiring four people. As the administration pieces of those are starting to be complete, we're now in construction. So there's not a lot of administration going on. So as we've had staff move on to other opportunities, we're not refilling those positions. What we're looking at here, number eleven, transition of CDBG staff to general fund, is the manager. It's the person that we hired to manage all that big stuff that came in. And this transition would actually be to take that manager position off of the CDBG entitlement administration and have them do other things housing-related. So the division is called Community Initiatives and Housing, but all they do is CDBG. If we maintain this position, it would manage and oversee the CDBG staff, but also be able to help us with things like HSAB. They can't work on HSAB and be grant-funded, we have to pay for that. So we'd have a, a person dedicated versus, you know, four or five people working on it here and there. The Strategic Housing Action Plan, which we haven't been able to pick up, kick off, do the outreach for, that would be a really good task for that position. And then we can start actively pursuing other opportunities. So we can look for other grants that the city may be able to receive in order to further our workforce and affordable housing policy. So those are the types of things we've started to think about that that person could do for the city as a whole that aren't necessarily going to be funded by those federal grants that we get regularly.
Would that add additional money to the funding, to that, to that seven hundred thousand? Would that money that you're using now, funding that administrator, be added to that?
No, the seven hundred comes from the feds, they give us the number every year.
No administration cost on that?
The administration, there's administration money in there.
Yeah.
That administration money would fund the two that we've always had along the way. This additional person will hopefully be able to find us some additional grant funds to help pay for their position. This is kind of a worst-case scenario if we get no other funding.
But this is taking the manager out of it so they can do other things.
Yes, ma'am.
And the people who are working directly with this would be the two people.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're kind of shuffling it around. I think it is an excellent idea. I have always, always thought that the, the more that we can pay out of general fund and put more of this money into actually doing stuff, spending it on the people and the prog- programs, the better. So I am wholeheartedly in favor of this one myself.
I am too, and, um, mainly because it's going to free up your ability to what you're going to be working on. You know, when you're administrating a certain program, that's what you're doing, right? And so this is going to provide some flexibility, so I'm, I'm fine with it, uh, with the optimism that we'll get some additional funding sources out of it, right?
Let's hope so.
I'm excited about it. Others? I see a thumbs up from Mr. Prather, thumbs up for Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
I think we're, we're going to get more, we're going to be able to help more people and do more things with this plan, thank you.
Yes, and then we'll be able to bring back a work session, uh, on HSAB, CDBG, ARPA, the opioid, you know, the, the diversion stuff that we're talking about.
Actually, could we talk about all the stuff that this person's going to be responsible for? Because I liked what Ms. Hernandez was saying.
We, we can, I don't know that it's necessarily one and the same of what you're talking about here, but yes, I think we, I think we can incorporate it.
Well, housing initiatives and rehab and this, that and the other. I don't see that that's terribly different from what we're talking about, which is how do we help people?
Okay.
So now we're getting into the topic of how do we help people more than how we fund it, but how we fund it's got to be part of that conversation.
Yes, ma'am, I think it would be cool if, uh, the Equity Officer, that's her title, could be in there too. Because I was thinking as the mayor was talking about like a chart or something, like, would we see folks that could get money from elsewhere? Maybe we could plug them in with the opportunities from Splash and stuff, you know, be more intentional about. And we're already talking about it, might as well just be like, hey, ping, so, cool.
Yep, we can do that. We can do that. And she's been working on some really great things, even today, we, we, um, she's, she's redoing our anti-discrimination policies and really make sure that, you know, people know how to report stuff. No, I know, but I'm just saying, she's working on a lot of different aspects of things.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that here in a little bit.
Yeah.
Item twelve.
Twelve is consider funding stormwater capital improvement projects using general fund capacity. The city council had provided guidance in the past to, to do so for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, which is the upcoming fiscal year. And we're just asking that you want us to continue to do so.
Yes, I'm, yes.
I'm a huge yes, we used to pay for it out of general fund. Now we just have a little more money to spend on it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, sorry, ma'am, yes.
No, I was counting that as a yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay.
And thirteen is just other considerations that. And thirteen, there's just other considerations that City Council may have that has been listed as a decision point.
That's under the strategic goal of environmental protection?
It does not have to be under that specific.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Any of them.
All right, so that's open.
The, uh, concept of this CGB fund tied to population growth, there's some type of formula that.
We can talk about that at the workshop, when we talk about funding and how to fund and how to choose that number. And, uh, and, and Ms. Reyes, I sometimes remind her that there is a, a suggestion made in the early nineties, that it be two percent of our budget. I don't think we can afford that. But it was at the time, because we didn't have as much going on. Other considerations in general. All right, I'm, I may ask this again at the end of what we're doing. We have a whole nother section to go through, actually multiple sections. There we go.
But general fund tends to be the biggest.
It is.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, these others won't be as.
Uh, so the, next, we'll talk about our enterprise funds. The first is, um, our largest enterprise fund, that's the electric fund. And it accounts for the transactions related to the city's operation, maintenance, and improvement of the electric utility services. It purchases and distributes electric power to the San Marcos community. The primary revenue source is the rates charged to customers for electric services within the Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, which is referred to as CCN boundary. Uh, and it supports, uh, um, operations, the electric conservation, meter operations, maintenance, the administration related to providing electric utility billing and business office, and the capital improvement program related to electric services. These are the assumptions that are built into the electric forecast that we're going to show. Um, the assumptions are for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-eight, require an average base rate increase of five point eight percent. When you look at what the total bill, electric bill is, uh, it would be an effective increase of two percent to the ratepayer. The average, the annual personnel and operational expense increase will be three percent, just as what we covered in the general fund. And the annual debt issuance for the capital improvement program would be, um, ten million dollars each year for fiscal year twenty-five and beyond. So, uh, using those assumptions, this is the forecast for the electric utility fund. If you begin in fiscal year twenty-four, use, uh, we have, uh, there was a planned use of fund balance. The total budget was about seventy-four million. Using those assumptions for, uh, twenty-five, the revenues and expenses would be about seventy-seven million dollars. If, if you look at the chart below, that has the actual numbers or the table, not below the chart. So, you, you can, um, there's a square around what the ending fund balance is, so you can see if it's going down. So, using those rate adjustments that, on the assumption slide, you can see that, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, six, seven, and eight, the fund balance, um, is not going down, it's actually increasing slightly. So, it takes that amount of a rate adjustment to essentially break even with the electric fund. It also shown there is, in the last, uh, in the last, uh, budget policy was to evaluate moving to ninety days cash on hand as a fund balance policy from the current sixty days. And what's listed there is what the ninety-day policy, or what the ninety days cash on hand would be. Um, we, we really wouldn't be at ninety days during any, any of those years. As you can see, the difference is about, um, three and a half million dollars. Um, like, for instance, in twenty-five, the ninety-day requirement is nineteen million, and we'll have fifteen point seven million. So, we won't be at the ninety days, we're closer to the sixty-day range. And, um, and holding steady throughout that, uh, throughout the forecasted period. This slide provides a historical look at the rate adjustments for the electric fund. For the, and also at the bottom, it has what the recommendation has been from the Citizen Utility Advisory Board. There has only been, uh, across this, um, time period, from fiscal year fifteen through fiscal year twenty-four, there's been two rate adjustments, one in fiscal year twenty-two, and the most recent one in the current fiscal year. In this current fiscal year, the, uh, rate adjustment was five percent. That's what was recommended by the Citizen Utility Advisory Board, and that's what was, uh, passed by City Council. Moving on to our water, wastewater fund. Um, the water wastewater fund accounts for the operations, maintenance, and improvement of the city's water and wastewater utility, including the water production, distribution, and wastewater collection and treatment si- system. The primary revenue source for this fund are the rates charged to customers for the use of water and wastewater services. And it supports everything related, um, such as wastewater collection, water quality services, water distribution maintenance, water conservation efforts, water wastewater administration, and the capital improvement program for the water and wastewater service. The assumptions built into the forecast that'll be on the next slide for the water wastewater fund include, for fiscal year twenty-six, there would be a two percent rate increase, and in twenty-seven, a one percent. Um, the numbers right now, as we're looking at them, show that for fiscal year twenty-five, there isn't a need for an increase in the water wastewater fund. The annual personnel and operational expenses would increase by three percent. And the annual debt issuance for the capital program would be fifteen million in fiscal year twenty-five, and ten million for twenty-six and beyond. Uh, you'll notice when you see the slide that there's a significant amount of debt that's gonna fall off in fiscal year twenty-eight. And that, that'll, uh, provide some additional capacity in the water wastewater fund. And the, any additional, uh, uh, debt that's issued by the Alliance Regional Water Authority is not factored in, into this model. So, if, uh, Arwa was to issue additional debt, it's not factored into this. Uh, one thing that we did wanna note is the Water Wastewater Treatment Plant Operational Agreement will be bid out this year, and it'll be effective in fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, we're not sure how, how those costs would come back, and, and so, if they come back higher, it, it may change what this forecast looks like. So, uh, this is a look at the forecast. The top is a graphical chart, the bottom is just a table. Um, if you look at the, at the table for fiscal year, uh, twenty-four through twenty-eight, you can see, you, under those assumptions, uh, we're actually adding a little bit of fund balance each year. So, um, those rate adjustments and with those cost assumptions that were shared on the assumption slide, it, it's enough to, um, to move the water wastewater fund through the twenty-eight forecast and maintain its ninety-day fund balance requirement. That fund balances requirement's already present in the water wastewater fund, and as you can see, it's already meeting it.
And that's not including any additional potential debt from Arwa?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It, it does include, uh, debt for the, that the city would issue for its capital program, nothing from Arwa.
Do they have some big projects coming in the pipeline, or are they almost done with other big projects, or?
The big project. Arwa project.
Earlier, you said that, uh, I think you said two percent for the electrical fees. Uh, I always assumed, you know what that means, but that we're always ahead, or we're pretty healthy in that area. What has changed from now to back then?
On the, on the electric rates?
Yes.
And, uh, I can just speak to the, um, if there, uh, the, the city was able to, you know, there's always some cost efficiencies, you know, that you can, um, identify within a fund. And the rate structure was such, and the growth was, you know, with, within the electric system was such, that it, it could keep up with the, um, inflationary pressures, you know, increased cost of operating the, the system. The, the electric, um, font utility isn't like the water utility, it's not seeing as much new account growth as what the water wastewater utility is. So, that's why, you know, it's at a, at a point to keep up with the, uh, increased cost of operating, there has to be some rate adjustments.
Is that because we're annexing into Bluebonnet? And we don't have as many customers? There are water customers and our wastewater customers, but they're not our electric customers?
I, I, I know that that is, um, I don't know.
I mean, how else will we get more water customers and not electric?
Yes, ma'am. And, and, you know, I, I could speak to myself, you know, I, I live in, in La Sima, and, and I don't have the city of San Marcos electric. I do have water wastewater. So, yeah, so that, that would be an impact.
But we're really healthy, I thought, on those funds. But I guess it's making that much of a difference with all this new residential homes that are going up?
We don't, we don't.
I don't think it pays for it.
We don't get, we don't get everything, you know, because it's not all in RCCN. The other thing I'll tell you is, um, talking with other city managers that are, you know, dealing with fast, fast-growing issues like we are, and, and just hearing people tell me, like, on the water wastewater side, I know the city manager of Georgetown was telling me that he was going to his council for like a thirty percent increase. And, um, and it was.
Kyle's done.
And, and that they're, and Kyle was on there too, and they're gonna have to do a really big increase as well, because Brian was, was on there as well. And, um, and they talked about the fact that, like, for Georgetown, it's not even for additional infrastructure and things. It's for paper water, to be able to say they have water rights, to be able to do things. So, that's the thing that I think isn't always impressed upon, that maybe we don't say a lot, is again, let's go back to why we have some of the higher water wastewater rates. It's because of the planning that's been done. That's why people are coming to us for those rights and things like that, is, you know, and like, when y'all had to, when we sell some, uh, to Wa- to Kyle, is because, again, we have planned, the councils before, before y'all and y'all. Have been planning to make sure that we're in a much better place. We're not having to go to these other outside entities to say, hey, can you give us water, can you spot us water rights, can you do that? Because we've taken care of ourselves in a point that now we even have some capacity to be able to try to sell to other customers to help to mitigate the rates. The other.
Temporary capacity until we need it.
Exactly, exactly. Um, thanks for that, that clarification. The other thing is, you know, when you think about water wastewater, and you think about electric, like, though, we're, we're, we employ people that are funded out of that. So, like, the line people and, and, you know, the water wastewater workers, they are funded out of this. So, if we don't increase things for operations, those raises and everything that other employees get in general fund, they also get it. So, it's gotta increase the costs of us doing business in those funds. So, the councils before you, one time, I've, I've been here now almost twenty-three years. And so, I've seen so many different things, and at one time, things had gotten to a point where we had kept rates static. But what happened? Then we had to come to council and say, we're in a bad situation, we have to increase rates by twenty-five percent. And I remember the councils at the time said, hey, don't do that to us again. Come to us slow as you go, instead of doing these large rate increases. So, that's the reason why you feel like, okay, every year we're bringing you a rate increase, because again, we're trying to do that slow as you go. So, if that philosophy has changed, that's what we need to, to get, you know, some direction from council.
But it's a business, you're paying for gasoline, same as we are. You're paying for vehicles, same as we are.
Paying for people.
You're, you're, you're paying for people, and, and we talk about increases. We've, we've all experienced increases, so the electric, the, the utility funds are going to experience those, same, same as, as we do.
But we're in a little better situation, I think, here in San Marcos, because we kinda, it's not like Georgetown. I don't think they own their own electrical company, not that we own the whole thing, but you know what I'm talking about. And water, so when it comes to the water, we've got more than anybody else.
Exactly.
And the reason.
And there's a cost to that.
Yeah, and the reason was, we never wanted to raise the increase on our residents, we wanted to sell that water to make up the.
But it costs to get that water and those water rights. That, that costs, that costs a lot of money in order to be able to have those for the future. And right now, while we don't need them yet, and we're, it's good when we make a little money on it.
Well, and, and, and Ms. Reyes is doing a great job explaining this.
Yes, she is.
Uh, uh, this is really about the amount of growth and, and when do you spend the money and how do you borrow it, right? We, we had higher water rates for, earlier on, we borrowed the money to pay for a project that was, is gonna provide us water for, uh, you know, a couple decades. And the, the forethought that went into that was, was, um, was very, very good, it put us in a very good spot. That, um, I contend that in a few years, the other cities are probably gonna have higher rates than us because they didn't think ten and twenty and thirty years out like we did. So, I have explained that to dozens of my constituents about, why are my water rates higher than your Brantles or Kyle? I'm like, well, give it ten or twenty years, and then they're gonna be wishing we were in our situation, um, because we will, we're prepaying for that. And that project now, who knows how much that Alliance project would be if we started it today, what that dollar figure would be, scares me.
That would be hu- humongous. But see, we went through this when we started buying, uh, Canyon Lake water. And we had to buy, we had to build a water treatment plant, and rates had to go up.
Right.
And people would complain, and I would say, be glad you're going to have water in the future, was, was the response. We had to build a water treatment plant, we, we weren't just pumping up biodeautographer anymore, because you can't do that forever. And so, we were ahead, we were ahead of a lot of other folks who have now caught up. Uh, but yeah, we, we were high for a while, but, but we had the foresight to figure out what to do, and the others didn't, and you're right, they'll catch up.
Yeah, they will. And, and as far as comparing it to the electric rates, the equivalent would be as if we owned, um, a, a larger percentage in our own utility plant, right? You, you own the, the, the front end of it, and then you, you can save money on the back end of it. And so, we're not gonna be able to grow the electric grid like we can, owning and being part ownership on the Alliance project, right? So, um, that's why, I can see why there's differences are gonna get even more exacerbated as we grow and we bring on that capacity. Um, hate to see it, um, and that's just part of inflation as much as anything. So, um, um, cu- great job, Ms. Reyes, for explaining that, because I have had to explain that to a lot of constituents. So, I hope they, uh, will get that note, that we have done a great job, and the previous councils and staff did a great job, and partners, and planning for this water, um, that, uh, you're paying for now.
Yeah, I think this conversation started back when Mayor Shu was the mayor that went ahead and probably implemented a lot of this stuff.
No, it's before that.
Was it?
Yes.
Oh, good job in explaining that, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows what's going on and why. And, uh, you know, I appreciate that.
Well, and we, I mean, it's our job to make sure we're informing the public. It's our job to make sure we're giving you the information, so that you can explain those things as you talk to people. And so, that, that's our goal, is to try to make sure that y'all are way more informed, um, you know, coming out of here than you were coming in here, just so that you can try to do, you know, do your due diligence in making those explanations.
Stuff that you just said out on our website anywhere that we can refer people to, or if they're looking up utilities, they would, might find that? And if not, maybe consider putting that out there.
We can, we can look and see, I mean, that's some stuff we can talk about.
And getting, getting back to that too, whenever Alliance does come on board, um, promote that. And tell everybody, this is what you get for what you've been paying in for your higher water rates now, with the asset that is to the community. We need to make sure and broadcast that to the community.
Okay. Continue on, Mr. Locke.
This is the history of the Water Wastewater Utility Rate Adjustments, um, that same time period. Um, in order to, um, to keep up with the increasing cost of that we were all just discussing, there's been a rate adjustment in the Water Wastewater Fund every year, uh, from fifteen through twenty-four, with the exception of fiscal year twenty-three. Our next, did you have a question, ma'am?
No, it's just your page numbers are different from mine, and so, that's, um, it, it takes me a minute or two to catch up, but everything's lovely.
The next fund is our Stormwater Fund. It, it was established to provide funding for planning, engineering, construction, maintenance, improvement, and reconstruction of stormwater management projects throughout the city. The primary revenue source are the rates charged to customers for stormwater management, that's based on impervious cover. This fund, the revenue supports maintaining all the city-owned drainage infrastructure, streets sweeping operations. It helps maintain the municipal separate storm sewer system program, referred to as MS four, and the capital improvement program, uh, for stormwater, which, uh, we've been using general fund capacity to assist with. So, for the stormwater forecast that you'll see on the next slide, the assumptions are that revenues will increase from a. the assumptions are that revenues will increase from account growth by three percent year over year. Um, we're, we're seeing a, a little bit more than that recently. Um, but our assumption is, is that the account growth would increase by three percent. That's not a rate adjustment, it's just from the accounts growing. Annual personnel and operational expenses will increase by three percent year over year. And that the general fund will continue to fund the stormwater capital improvement projects for both the current year, fiscal year twenty-four, and for twenty-five, as we just received some, um, direction from city council. The annual debt issuance for the capital program for twenty-six and beyond is two million dollars. And I, um, Sean Condor, uh, during the, um, capital program, um, presentation to city council was talking about that, that's not enough to support all the projects for stormwater. So there may be, um, some additional discussion if we wanna continue to use, uh, general fund capacity for stormwater beyond fiscal year twenty-five. So, uh, using those assumptions, uh, this is what the stormwater forecast looks like. Um, it also, like, the Water Wastewater Fund has a large amount of debt maturing in twenty-twenty-eight. So if you follow the expenses over, you, you can see that, um, in twenty-twenty-eight, the total expenses are dropping to nine point eight million, down from ten million. So the expenses are going down, and that's just from a large debt maturing. Um, in terms of our fund balance, um, you can see that it is gradually increasing year over year, and that's without any kind of rate adjustment. A large part of that is, uh, from the general fund, um, assisting with the, uh, with the capital program. The, right now, the Stormwater Fund has a goal of working toward the ninety-day fund balance requirement. And we're, we're really close, uh, with that. As the, um, and as you can see, as the years go through, our forecast actually shows that we will be there, um, for twenty-five and beyond. So we might be able to change that to maintain instead of work toward, or, I'm sorry, for twenty-six and beyond. This is the, uh, history of Stormwater Utility Rate Adjustments. Um, again, there, this is another fund where it has required rate adjustments, um, for every year, with the exception of fiscal year twenty-four. And there's, uh, right now, it doesn't look like there's a needed rate adjustment for twenty-five either. Um, and that is, again, because of the, uh, general fund taking over the capital program for the, uh, using its capacity for stormwater. Onto Resource Recovery. And it was established to account for activities related to the city's solid waste disposal system. And the primary revenue source for Resource Recovery are the rates charged to customers for solid waste services. There's a lot of different programs that Resource Recovery supports. Uh, of course, the residential trash recycling and green waste pickup, multifamily recycling, recycling and brush drop-off, downtown trash collection, the household hazardous waste program, the reuse warehouse. And I already, uh, mentioned the brush drop-off, but also mulch, uh, mulch pickup. The assumptions and the forecast that you'll see for Resource Recovery in, include revenues increasing three percent year over year. And the, and again, that is from, um, that is from account growth. And that annual person, personnel and operational expenses, as we've been discussing, increase at three percent a year.
So that three percent is not us increasing the fees by three percent, because you just said that's from growth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that's not clear. I, I didn't read it that way. I thought, oh, all these other things are, we're making the choice to do that, we're making the choice to do that. I figured this one was that way too, so.
We can clarify that.
Yes, uh, um, I, I, I just realized it as I was reading it.
Yeah, okay. No, that's good news.
Yeah. This is what the forecast looks like for Resource Recovery in fiscal year, uh, twenty-five. Forward, you can see that we're, we're maintaining fund balance, um, and we're starting to use it a little in fiscal year twenty-eight. So as long as the, the growth, um, keeps up at that three per, three percent range, it, it is projected to offset the, the current expenditures that, that we have. Doesn't include adding any new programs, you know, to Resource Recovery, but it covers current services.
But why are we not using some of that?
The, the fund balance?
Well, I'm gonna call it the extra fund balance, the fund balance that's over whatever minimum we're requiring, whether it's ninety days, sixty days, twenty-five percent, because, you know, I don't like it that this stuff goes into fund balance. I'd be putting the extra money into something that we know we can spend, and we can look at that number. But still, I'm gonna call it extra fund balance, because I will never, ever say, let's go spend the stuff that we need to keep.
Yes, ma'am. Um, that, we're building a fund balance for the household, household hazardous waste.
Center?
Yes, ma'am, the new facility. So that, that.
Oh, that's an excellent answer. That's what I like to see. We, 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 we're making a little money, we're saving some money, and we have a goal. So maybe we don't have to charge more later. That's great.
This is the history of rate adjustments for Resource Recovery. And, and it has had, um, as the, uh, the past few funds that we've reviewed, a rate adjustment every year, including this current fiscal year. Although it does not look as if it needs to in our current forecast.
Good answer.
Okay, uh, that brings us to the airport. And it was established to account for the revenues and expenses of the San Marcos Regional Airport. The primary revenue sources for the airport is the commercial and agricultural leases, the hangar rentals, and the fuel flowage fees. It supports all the operations at the San Marcos Regional Airport. So the assumptions in our airport forecast are that the revenues will increase by two percent year over year, and that expenses, as with the other funds, would increase at three percent. Uh, the general fund will continue to provide the ten percent match on state and federal grant opportunities. Um, also provide, it's a fifty percent match for the annual routine airport maintenance program. It's a fifty thousand dollars. And, um, the, the state provides a fifty percent, uh, match to that. And to use, um, the general fund uses its capacity for the capital improvement program, and that we would continue to do that. As you'll be able to see on the forecast, and just by the underlying assumptions, when revenues are increasing by two percent and expenses by three, that expenses are outpacing revenues, and it causes a continuous decline in fund balance. And this is what the airport's forecast looks like. Under those assumptions, you can see that we, we'll use a little bit of fund balance, and by the time that we would get to fiscal year twenty-eight, we, we wouldn't have a fund balance in the airport an, anymore. There is a, one of the items that we discussed or envisioning, and there was a decision point too, was to begin looking at if we start keeping the revenue, the property tax revenue and the sales tax revenue generated at the airport, within the airport, to help, um, facilitate the operations at the airport.
Where are we at on that discussion? Did we, did we?
We have a decision point coming up for us to decide.
Perfect. I thought I had seen it someplace, but I wasn't sure.
That's where it was. It's coming up, it's coming up. Stay tuned.
And the, the last enterprise fund that we discuss, that we'll discuss is transit. And it accounts for the revenues and expenses related to the public transit system within the city. The primary revenue sources are federal and state grants. Those make up seventy percent of the total revenues. And the general fund's contribution, which makes up the remaining thirty percent of the revenues. And it supports public transit operations that include the local fixed bus routes, on-demand paratransit, and a commuter bus route from San Marcos to Austin. The assumptions in the transit forecast include revenues increasing three percent year over year, as well as the expenses.
And, uh, of course, this does not include any discussions of the integration of the bus services and all of that that may potentially happen in the future, correct?
I, I don't believe so.
With us being the sole recipient for that?
I just didn't know how that might potentially change all this.
No, it is, it is factored in. We, we look ahead at that, so yes, it is.
Okay, okay. This was wondering if it would factor in.
Good question.
Did, did it ever take place about the sole recipient for the bus system?
All right, uh, this is the forecast for transit. It, you can see that really the revenues and expenses are, are coming in, um, as, um, equal, so our fund balance remains unchanged. There's a proposed fund balance on here, and, and what that is from, you know, at the last, uh, budget policy meeting, actually, I believe it was, or during the budget process, there was some discussion on if we should have a fund balance requirement for all the funds that have employees in it. So that's why this is listed as a proposed fund balance of sixty-day requirement. And if we were to have a sixty-day requirement, it has what that amount would be. And, and you can see as, as you move through, for the most part, we would be meeting that requirement. Um, when the budget starts to grow, then, um, it, it looks like we would fall a little short of the sixty days. But that's what it would look like.
Do we ever, does that enterprise fund have a bond rating? Do we ever borrow money against that for projects? We never have, have we? I just wanted to confirm that.
Good question.
And that will bring us to our decision points for the enterprise funds.
Get ready, everybody. Turn on your microphones.
The, the first decision point is what Ms. Reyes mentioned earlier, and that is continue with the incremental rate increase approach for the, for all utilities, as opposed to bringing a twenty-five percent increase in one year.
Mr. Mendoza is a yes. Others?
And I'm just gonna clarify that this is continue incremental rate increases, instead of potentially having to look at large increases. More of a philosophical decision than a.
It's, it's more of a this, it's more of a this than this.
I just wanted to clarify that, probably on, on record of voting for increases.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Right. Well, only if we need it.
Only if needed.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
So you're a yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Prater?
Yeah, yeah. For nine years now, I've been saying we should slowly increase.
All right. Thank you.
The, the next couple items are for, uh, the Electric and Water Wastewater Fund, both. Uh, the first is evaluate rates and determine if an adjustment is necessary based on the rate models and the Citizen Utility Advisory Board recommendation. That's, has been our past practice.
I was gonna say, that's what we do now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
No.
Don't base it on QAB?
It's just strictly for.
Evaluate and determine if an adjustment is necessary based on the rate model and QAB's recommendation, which is based on the rate model. It doesn't say if we're gonna raise them or not, or by how much. It just says, are we, are we gonna do it on the basis of data? Is that a good way to put this?
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
Not, gee, I just think we ought to go up ten percent, because it sounds good, which I don't think we've ever done that either, but, just to make sure.
And, and then the, the next one is, um, having QAB present recommendation to city council. And that's something that, um, I brought forward as, as a consideration, because, you know, when I think about the fact that these are representatives appointed by you to serve and, and have the citizens' perspective in getting the data from our team, being able to do that. And so maybe it might be good for fellow community members, as well as council, to hear from the citizens that you've appointed to make these recommendations and why they're making those recommendations. So I just felt like that might give a little bit, you know, to, to the credibility of that. And so it's a new thing, and just wanted to see if y'all thought that that might be helpful versus having, um, our staff stand up and tell you all the things, you can hear it from the citizens' perspective.
And we've got a citizens' board, and I'm not sure if every city has that, and I'm glad that we do. So I looked at this and went, yeah, they want to.
Well, we get a written report from them, and the recommendations and the rationale why, but I guess, you know, just to put a face to the report and, you know, so the citizens can see it, so we can see it, so we can.
And the public can hear from it, is what I was thinking. It's one of the few things we get that every person on that board or commission signs.
I personally like the idea.
So you're, you're a yes?
Very helpful.
I got you down as a yes.
I'm, I'm absolutely a yes, and, uh, it's a great explanation of why it should be done.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I was a yes anyway, but.
And it's another one to shout to the citizens too, that a lot of people apply for boards and don't realize this board actually impacts money,
It's an impact.
um, rates and, and, and things like that. So this is one where I've tried to steer some people to, that, uh, it may not, may not be flashy, but it involves money.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're yes, and we're, we're giving them, oh, some notice, some time. Okay, Mr. Lock.
Continuing, uh, the next is, um, just for the electric fund, and it's to change the fund balance requirement to work toward ninety days. And, and, uh, currently it reads evaluate ninety days of recurring operating expenses. And we'd like to change that to the same thing as stormwater was then, was for us to work toward it. Um, and city council may recall that the recent downgrade in the bond rating in the electric fund, uh, one of the reasons provided by the analysts was the lower fund balance, so if we had more of a reserve, that would certainly help. And so we would like to, uh, continue to work toward, have that be the policy.
So it would be changing, what's on page one, like you say, evaluate increasing the minimum fund balance from sixty days of recurring operating expenses to ninety days of same. So this would mean work towards it, as in we're a little more serious about it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm absolutely a yes, ma'am.
Yeah, me too.
I'm a yes too. That's a given.
Yes.
Okay. We're all yeses. We're the water wastewater.
And, and for that fund, um, maintaining the fund balance requirement at the ninety days of recurring operational expenses. It's already there.
Which is what we require now, and it just means continue?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good with continue.
Yes, yes.
We, we know we need to do it, so, okay. All righty. Unanimous on that one?
It moves us to stormwater, and it's continue using the general fund capacity for the capital program. We, we actually discussed that on the, on the general fund side, so we, we've already received direction from council on that one. And maintain fund balance requirement and work towards the ninety days of recurring operating expenses. I think actually what that is supposed to say is that we want to, um, uh, we're, we're already at ninety days. I think it currently reads work towards, and what we wanna do is now maintain the ninety days of recurring operating expenses.
I was gonna say, I think we're there, but the maintain. Okay. So basically, it's taken out work towards and say maintain, because we're doing good, we want to keep doing good?
Exactly.
Correct. All right, council?
Yes.
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 And points for us for getting there.
Yes.
Okay.
Next is Resource Recovery. And, and this currently does not have a fund balance requirement, um, in, for this fund. And it is explore creating a fund balance requirement to maintain sixty days of recurring operating expenses.
I'm a yes, and then, but I'm willing to give you flexibility with the new hazardous waste, uh, facility of when we actually implement that. Um, that, so I, I'm, I'm a yes, but with lots of leeway, considering what the project we have in mind.
Yes, with extras. I can go with that.
Sounds good.
Yes.
I do have a question, though, is why, and you've probably told us and I forgot, why is this one sixty and the others are ninety?
It is, um, partially the, the expenses within the fund. So if, if you look at the Resource Recovery Fund, the largest expense in that fund, um, is the contract that we have with the contractor. There are very few, um, actual employee expenses, so we don't need a higher amount of overall fund balance within the fund.
And I suspect our equipment needs are smaller.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, that, that's good. Let's talk about the air. Let's talk about airport. Is that the next one?
That is research, the impact of keeping the revenue generated within the airport for, and begin to look at that in fiscal year 2026. Right now, the estimates that we are seeing is that for property tax and sales tax combined, it would be about $220,000. So what this would do is it would, it would reduce the revenue in the general fund
Yes.
by 220,000, and it would provide additional funding, dedicated funding for the airport.
I am absolutely a yes.
Which is reinvested back into the airport, which we hope to see a return on that.
Well, and I think it gives us a more accurate representation of what actually is going on out there with a lot of the sales tax revenue and some of the property tax revenue was leaving there and going to the general fund. We don't really know what it actually, we've got money coming from general, from enterprise, that's, it's being moved around out there, and it's hard to put on paper exactly.
Sometimes it gets moved back because it's short.
Yeah, yeah, so to have a fund set aside where the money comes from there and stays there, I think will give a more accurate representation of what actually...
Kind of had that philosophy in other areas, so...
Yep, same, should be the same thing.
Hundred percent.
I'm good.
Okay, I've got down everyone who's indicated yes on that one.
And that's one of those that, again, it's research and us doing it based on available capacity since it's from the general fund and would take money away from there. So definitely, we're going to look at it, but also look at when's the right time and if it needs a transition.
Phase into it, 25%, 50...
Right.
I'm not going to walk you down on a date on this one.
Thank you.
I'll give you some flexibility.
Well, and you'll notice that's FY 2026, not this next year.
Yeah, they've already given themselves some time.
Okay.
That takes us to transit, and transit does not have a current fund balance requirement. And the, it's asking to explore creating a fund balance requirement to maintain 60 days of recurring operating expenses. And that's similar to the, to the other resource recovery. It's the reason that it's 60 and not 90.
And actually, we're, we've been there, and we're forecasted to, as you said earlier, be there till 2027. So I would say, why would we not formalize that?
We can do that as well.
So council, we think?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm hearing all yeses. All righty.
Okay, and then that would take us to the last section, the special revenue funds.
Just roll on.
Roll on, okay.
Unless I hear a clamoring, because I think this is...
I know, they're, I think, we've gotten spoiled with these like 8 o'clock, you know, 8:30 council meetings, and it's like, oh, this is 9 o'clock.
Yeah, but I'm thinking we're, we're on the downhill.
Yes.
Not in a bad way, but time-wise.
For sure, y'all have gotten through, yes, y'all have gotten through a lot of good...
Okay.
Okay, the first is the hotel occupancy tax, and it's established to account for the local, I should say, occupancy tax of 9%. The tax monies collected are used to support tourist development activities, downtown events and promotion, and the arts, and downtown events and promotion and the arts in accordance with state law, including any debt service repayments related to the hotel tax, and currently that's our convention center. The primary revenue source is the occupancy tax, which is 7%. And then that 2%, which is the venue tax, which is dedicated for the repayment of the conference center debt. This supports marketing and promotion of the city, the tourist development activities, downtown events and promotion, improvement of the arts. So the assumptions build into the forecast that you'll see for hotel tax are that the revenues will increase 2% year over year. Hotel tax has always been budgeted extremely conservative, especially, you know, post-COVID, and that annual personnel and operational expenses will increase by 3% year over year. Because we have budgeted revenues so conservatively and expenses are budgeted much lower than what the annual revenues are coming in, even though, even though that assumptions are revenues 2%, expenses 3%, when you see the forecast, it doesn't look as bad as what you might think. And so when you look at this, you have fiscal year '25, and we have the total operating revenue will be 5.1 million and the total expenses at 4.5 million. You'll see a big drop from FY '24 to FY '25, and there were some one-time expenses in fiscal year '24 that won't be in fiscal year '25. And you can look at where we estimated to bring in, and which we're, we're pretty certain it'll be the final number, a little over $5 million in fiscal year '23, and we're estimating 25 with that 2% increase of 5.1. So as you can see, using those assumptions, the revenues are high enough to cover the expenses. We do have a proposed fund balance on this fund as well. There currently isn't a fund balance, so the recommendation, recommendation would be to make that a 60-day fund balance, as with the other funds. And we more than cover that right now, as you can see.
Yeah, it looks like we'll have plenty of money to support our new proposal that we just implemented this week.
Wait, say that again?
The hot, the hot tax, extra revenue. It looks like we have plenty of revenue to help promote the single-use container.
Oh, yes, okay.
I wasn't sure, I hadn't gone back and actually looked at the numbers on the hot tax, and the actuals from 2022 really gave you a big boost there, so. That's what happens when you're conservative on your numbers.
So the budget's looking good, huh?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'll come back to that. I made up a decision point of my own here.
That's that other considerations.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
The next one is the community enhancement fund. It was established to enhance the appearance of San Marcos through increased litter pickup and beautification projects. The beautification efforts focus on I-35, the major corridors, downtown, the neighborhoods, and parks. The primary revenue source are residential and commercial fees, and it supports activities such as graffiti abatement, litter pickup, maintaining the public flower beds, downtown sweeping, mowing neighborhood parks and that additional I-35 mowing, and code enforcement for unsafe structures and blight. The next couple of slides just provide additional detail of what community enhancement funds. It funds community enhancement technicians. I mean, again, those technicians take care of the graffiti abatement, illegal signs, dumping flyers, stickers, and abandoned homeless camps. It also supports keeps San Marcos beautiful. It has a horticultural team that maintains 90,000 square feet of public beds. It's a two-person team. It supports an Easter sales agreement, and this is for roadway litter pickup, maintaining the medians and downtown sweeping, weekend and holiday litter pickup at the river parks, and mowing the neighborhood parks and that extra I-35 mowing, and code enforcement officers. And it funds two code enforcement officers that address the unsafe structures and blight.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's not so much budget-related, but I'm going to ask anyway. Mr. Gary can stop y'all before you answer if it's not. Have we gotten it laid out that we're getting these mowings and things done at particular times, like Bobcat Parents Weekend and those kinds that we talked about before? That's what I need to see from Mr. Carr. Big thumbs up, thank you. As a former employee here, longtime employee, used to say scheduling is everything.
Well, and I want to throw out there, too, that this might be the year that we might want to spend a little extra of the community enhancement fee.
Uh-huh. Prior to September 16?
About September, you know, July and August, we might. So I'm going to be, you know, open if you guys come back with it. We need a couple of projects that get identified, that we want to run that down just a little bit. That would be the time to do it, so.
Shift some of this.
Yeah. It's actually part of our planning process for that event is community beautification increased. Okay.
And I've also shamelessly asked the university, hey, if y'all have anything, you know, when you're talking to the state, you know, about this and the governor's office, is that there's anything that you see that, that we can access? I know y'all are looking at your grounds, but I'd love for '35 and the entryways to look...
Tie in a tourism component on this, because some of these people are going to stay overnight.
So we might be able to look at that.
I think they have money for that.
Yep.
I wonder if we can include our alleys that have actually been abandoned by residents. They've got privacy fences now, and there's some that they just can't get to due to their age and everything else. I'm not saying go out there and do all of them, but select the ones that could be a problem.
That come okay?
I see Mr. Carr acknowledging that.
That's the guy doing this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the community enhancement forecast has the, these assumptions. One, the revenues are reduced by 11,000, and that's due to a reduction in customer count from the sale of the properties to Texas State University.
But do they not pay an electric bill?
They, they would.
So, but are we assuming that they are going to just pay for the building and either not charge people individually? I think that's something to ask a few questions. I'm hoping that assumption may not be correct, because the, those people, they still going to need electricity, and how they administratively do that, I don't know. I don't know how they do it at Bobcat Village, that would be a question.
So we'll, we'll explore that just to make sure and verify.
Yeah. Thank you.
The revenues increase 3% year over year, and this should have been more clearly stated. The forecast you're going to see is just assuming from account growth, the 3% account growth, and the annual personnel and operation expenses increase by 3%. This is what the forecast looks like, and you can see from, you start with fiscal year '24, the ending fund balance being 660,000, and '25 it's 628, and then it starts to go down. So the expenses are more than revenues without some type of rate adjustment in this fund.
And that's with the next slide of the potential two code enforcement officers being moved over to the general fund, is that factored into that?
That is not. So that, that'll produce a completely different forecast, and we'll go over that right now.
Okay.
So the, that is an option, and if we transfer, the, this assumption is to transfer the first of the two code enforcement officers in fiscal year '27 to the general fund at a cost of approximately 78,000, and the second one in '28 at a combined cost, when you get both of them in there, of 155,000. And if we do that, then this is what the forecast looks like. And with this, you can see by the time you get to '27 and '28, the fund balance starts to go back up.
Sorry, Mr. Locke, I was two slides ahead of you.
Yeah, yeah. And that will bring us to our decision points. The first is hotel tax, and that is continue budgeting revenues based on the conservative historical trends, and that's just based on those numbers that we went over. 2% is what we've been using on the revenue side.
Council, where are you on that?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm hearing all yeses. Ms. Garza stepped out for a minute, so we're yeses. Okay.
The next one is explore creating the fund balance requirement to maintain 60 days of recurring operating. That's one. Two, if city council wanted to, to take action on that immediately, there's certainly the fund balance there.
You know, that's one where if it hadn't been for the experience of COVID, I probably wouldn't be worried about it. But after COVID, I think it's probably not a bad thing to have in place.
I'd make it 90.
I'd make it 90 because of COVID. With COVID, I mean, I mean, it showed what a drop could be and then what the rebound could potentially be, too. So if you want to make it 90, ma'am, I'm with you.
Well, we've got the, we've already got the money in there, so why not use 90? Are y'all good? Okay, so my answer is yes, but 90. Are y'all good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
The, the next one is allocate funding for historical restoration and preservation based on capacity.
Yes.
What do we mean by that?
This is...
Is this the question that I'm adding based on memos from today?
Yeah. So there are, there are two different considerations that play in the capacity. One is the 15, the 15% cap that we have. And based on the revenues that we, hotel tax revenues we receive, that cap is around $550,000 each year that we can spend towards historical restoration and preservation. And the, the other capacity would just be when you look at revenues and expenses, how much do we have to spend?
Okay. Stop me if I say anything incorrect, but I'm looking at today's memo. Did y'all know that we can spend up to 15% on historic preservation that encourages tourism? And we're spending 2.4, 2.7 or something now? And, and I asked what we're spending the money on, I got the, got the whole list. Y'all, I think we need to be spending...
15%.
Up to 15% on historic preservation and renovation and whatever we can legally use it for, because we've got some things that we thought we couldn't afford. And I think we can.
And this is a large amount of money, too. 15% of that fund is a significant chunk of money.
You just said it's 550?
Yes, ma'am.
Thousand dollars?
What does that 550 max come from?
The 550 is the, it's 15% of the annual hotel tax revenues.
We can spend up to that legally. You can't spend over that out of hotel money.
I'm good.
And, and I don't know how that's going to impact other things, but we poured a lot of ARPA dollars, CARES dollars, one or the other or both, into CBB this last year or two for some software upgrades and some other stuff.
We, we did do some ARPA dollars. Council may recall also with the Family Justice Center that you said that you wanted that, if it was 45,000? That, that's also going to historic preservation. That's general fund money, though, that's not hot money. So there's that, and then whatever else y'all would choose to spend out of hot money.
But if we spent it out of here and looking at the fund balance, it looks like we can well afford it. We can maybe save a little from general fund.
Correct.
And is anybody keeping a running total of the hit that we made on the general fund this evening?
I'm, I'm, I'm doing, yes.
I hope so. Are we up to a million yet?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, just because of all the things. So if, if we could put that back into the general fund, that would help on some of the things. The 45,000 for historic preservation that y'all have done before and instead take it from hot.
I know where that 45 can go. Okay. So I'm, I'm going to say yes and spend without, certainly not impacting any salaries. I, I, I want us to spend as, as much of that money as we possibly can based on projects per year. I don't know, is, can we spend this for like the whole thing of a project? The design, the construction, you know, everything on a project? Or since we're not doing it, do we know, do we even know those things?
And can we use it for matches?
Hello, Rebecca Iborra, Director of Destination Services.
Thank you for joining us.
So the project has to have a tourism component. So we can't restore a building that's going to be used for public use. It has to have a tourism component, so...
How is public use and tourism component?
Like community use and not focused on tourism. So you can't...
Can we not do both?
It has to, it has to meet that two-part test.
We don't, we don't have any public buildings that are tourism-related?
Yeah, that's a stretch.
Okay, what would be the limitation? What would be required for it to be considered tourism-related? That's why I need to ask that question.
The way, the way we, the way we see it is there has to be a use of 50%, 51% or more of convention or visitor use.
So if there is, if it's a museum, and most of the time, the 51%, it has museum function?
That's a possibility. I would, we have, we have Scott Jozlov, we have Scott Jozlov coming to speak to us March 20th, and we have a list of items that we will present to him so he can include in his presentation, and this is definitely one of those that we can.
My, my question now is not how can we not meet it, it's how can we meet it? What, what do we do to, to... What, what do we do to, to meet that? But then again, I don't want to take something and spend a lot of money on it, the community never gets to use it. But if, if we forget that fifty-one percent thing, and we can prove by, you know, the use, et cetera, I, I, I would like us to see how we can meet it, and not, not be worried about how we can't, because that, that's where I am.
Yeah, and we can work on that.
I have a question. Is there like something specific you have in mind, like just to like kind of help us imagine?
I'm talking about the Dunbar Building.
The Dunbar Building specifically?
Well, that's one of, or maybe the first of, but yes.
Okay.
Because we keep saying we can't afford it, we don't have the money in general fund, which we don't, but I'm trying to find another way.
Is there other ones? Or that's just the one?
I don't know, I'd like us to start looking.
Yeah, and this is one, I realize that it's not gonna be, every year it may be a little bit different, depending on what kind of project comes up or the amount available, but this is one where I think we could get pretty creative with what we call fifty-one percent tourism, right?
But, but I mean, it couldn't be used on a private, privately owned, can it?
That's to be determined by, by city, by municipal government.
But it could be used on someone's home, their, their personal home.
No, it cannot be used.
Exactly.
No.
But there's other things.
Tax-free, tax-free entities.
We, we, we talk about ourselves being historic, and we want to promote the historic, and we got this half a million dollars there, and we're not doing it.
I don't.
Well, that's, I think, like the museums and things like that, I think could definitely be justifiable. But yeah, I mean, I think this is, I mean, I can't believe we haven't ever discussed this before.
Well, the reason is, is because we didn't, never had the financial capacity to do so. We are at the point now that we have funds available.
Well, we could have before, it just depends on how we choose to spend our money.
Yes, we had most of it, we, all of it was allocated to other programs, yes.
Yes, but the decision did get to our level.
Yes.
And, and five hundred thousand, I know is a big number, but there could have even been some twenties and fifties in there at some point.
Well, and I'm not demanding, we, we, we do spend it all, but I would like to...
Explore all possibilities.
Start looking at what, what we can do.
I, I'd be, I guess, interested in, in maybe better understanding what like the, the big spoke of hotel tax, like what all it could be used for, just because I'm, now it's like you have to do the two-part, but it can be used on this, so I'm just like kind of confused, like.
I have a document that is prepared for easy, easier consumption, and I can share that with you.
But it's, it's, it's pretty...
It's not quite that, it's a lot of words, sorry.
You know, it's okay, they're digestible.
But it's pretty strict, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I will be glad to share that document with you.
Yeah, I think that helps me contemplate, like if I want to do like unconservative historical trends, I don't, I don't know. I feel like there's like, I've seen other cities do really cool stuff with it, so I'm like, not that historical preservation isn't cool, but...
Well, but the thing is, if we take money that can't be used for other things and put it on historical preservation, that means we're not spending general fund to do it, and general fund can be used in different ways.
Will you remind me how much money generally we spend on historical preservation from the general fund?
Not much.
I think it's just, isn't it just a forty-five thousand?
A hundred thousand this year.
It's a hun, there's a hundred thousand dollars in general fund for historic preservation this fiscal year, and there's fifty thousand of, for, for one specific project, and then other smaller projects out of hotel occupancy tax.
Right, and those things could have funded things without restriction, the hotel tax does have restrictions, but if we can figure it out.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
And this is one where I felt like our hands were even tied even more about what we could actually do from it, and then we've come up with potentially two different things we could spend that money on that could have a huge impact on our community.
Okay. Like what? So, I, I'm a yes, Mr. Gleason, you're a yes. I guess, you're a yes, Mr. Mendoza's a yes, Mr. Prater's a yes.
This is for the continued budgeting revenues?
This, this is for seeing what we can spend for historic preservation legitimately out of hotel tax dollars.
Oh, okay, like getting creative for that fifty-fifty, okay.
And we've, and we've got money to do it with.
Yes, I, I just want, like, I really liked the vibes of like the museums and stuff, because like I think, you know, Calaboose, Centro, stuff like that, that would be part of like what you're contemplating.
Well, I'm thinking even the Price Center, we own that building.
The Price Center be charging a lot to rent out those buildings, that's all I'm saying. Is that gonna bring that down? That'd be cool, for the community use of it all. Like six hundred American dollars for what?
So to remind you, we do currently have twenty-five thousand dollars funding for operations of those buildings and those programs for the museums.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
And I have a question about that later.
I'm learning so much.
Yes, but that, that doesn't fix a building that needs a whole lot of work, that we own.
Yes, ma'am, it's the operation of the programs.
Right. Okay, so I've gotten enough yeses for that, and I believe we have at least two more decisions. Thank you, Ms. Ibarra, for hanging in with us so late. We always get to these last.
Margaritas later?
Bet, you say where, I'm there. I was thinking pancakes, but I'm going for margarita.
That brings us to community enhancement, and that's if capacity allows transfer two code enforcement officers from community enhancement to the general fund. One position would be in fiscal year twenty-seven, the second position in twenty-eight for a combined cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
It's pretty far out, year twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Well, they, they've just gotta put things in place to, to do that.
It's, it's on purpose, because, I mean, if we're looking at trying to get that multi-year public safety plan done, and then also, we're gonna have to look at when we start absorbing firefighters, you know, once, if we get the safer grant?
Yep.
When we start being able to add them back into general fund, so it's just trying to...
Multi-year plan.
To give us some time, yeah.
Here's, here's where I'm, I'm, I'm going with this, seeing as how we have hit the general fund up pretty good this evening. And, and this, this is a ways into the future. What I'm, what I'm looking at, Ms. Reyes, is the, the two downtown that we're paying out of the tourist money. And could we pay them out of community enhancement, or at least partly out of community enhancement? I'd rather see the code enforcement people out of general fund, but I can wait as long as you need, and put the downtown people out of this.
We'll need to see how much, how much...
That, that, that's where I'd rather see us go, because don't we need to find a place for those two?
Yep.
Which has greatly enhanced the appearance of our downtown.
We're trying to do one, just because what I, what, the direction that y'all provided during visioning was, we need one, want...
We want to, but it was way at the bottom of the list.
So, I mean, we can look and see if there's a way to, to fund one through here.
One thing, just as a reminder, remember, part of the intent of this was to relieve some of the pressure on the CE fee, and, and that chart that John showed a while back, where the fund balance was trending downward, if we don't do something different.
I know, and I, I really do want the code enforcement officers paid out of general fund, I really do, but we're trying to find a place to pay the others, and I think taking, well, it's gonna be years, but I think taking two out of here and putting one back in, that would still be a plus for us. So I'm, I'm a yes, but I'm willing, well, I guess it doesn't matter, it's twenty-seven, twenty. I was gonna say, I'm willing for this to be one of the last hits that we make to general fund.
Yes.
But, but, but on your long-range looking glasses, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, okay, Mr. Mendoza's a yes. Mr. Prater says he's a yes. Garza?
Uh, this is, yeah, I guess. I feel like a lot of times I say yes, and then like, it's, it's like JK, we didn't do this like this, so I'm like, what's the point? Well, I guess, but that's not, no shade, it's like everything kind of is moving and depends on one thing, the other thing, so...
Things change, who would have thought sales tax would be down this far? So it gives them some direction, but next year, they may come back and have a different recommendation, because does things change?
I mean, who would have saw that we were gonna lose two apartment complexes this year? I mean, the things, things have changed, yeah, that were, two were purchased out from, so...
I guess that things change.
And that's where, that's where some of that hit came from, so yeah, I, I'm fine with the timeframe, whatever you guys...
And we have one more?
With the community enhancement, there's explore creating the fund balance requirement to maintain the sixty days of operating expenses.
And we are currently, we're there, we have the money to do that.
Yes.
Then I'm gonna say yes, but ninety.
Oh, but, but, but fund downtown people out of this, too.
And Mayor, go look at that forecast, on the community enhancement forecast, too. I'm fine with sixty days, especially since...
I'm looking at the ending fund balance, and I'm looking at the proposed of sixty days, and we're handling it. I mean, sixty is great, ninety if we can, but yes, we need, we need to do it.
And if we move a couple employees, I think one of the main reasons to stay at ninety is because you have additional payroll out of those, that if we move a few people away from that and into the general fund, sixty days is probably enough for the community enhancement.
What we do want to do, we, we want to make, we want to formalize the fact that we actually have the money, and we need to, we need to keep it that way.
Yeah, I, I'm, I might be open to the discussion of nineties in the, in the future, but sixty days from now is fine, especially with us thinking about potentially removing some payroll from that.
Others?
Sixty for now.
Mr. Prater's at sixty, but a yes to sixty, so that's good.
Staff recommended sixty, I'll go with sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty.
All right. Hey, it's a ways off, things, things can change, but it's good, it's good to be looking towards the future and keeping everything safe.
And that brings us to our last slide, and that's just the next step, will be the budget policy adoption, so we'll take all the guidance that city council provided this evening and update the budget policy statement, and bring that back to city council on March nineteenth for consideration.
Is there any further business?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel.
I got a call for, okay, go ahead.
The thoughtful, the thoughtful discussion, and I know this took us a little bit longer, but it was a lot of really great, I think, conversation, and a big thank you to Mr. Locke for standing up there the entire time.
Thank you.
And delivering a wonderful presentation, as well as...
He did good.
Tricia, you know, with getting all of this put together, so just wanted to really make sure we said thanks to everybody.
You bet, this, this doesn't happen in a vacuum. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd say thank you. I felt like there was a lot more information in this than has been in the past, some things that we've asked for in the past, we're here in the packet.
Oh, five times the information.
Yes, and so thank you very much, because I've gone back and even watched previous discussions, and there were things that we specifically asked for that you guys paid attention and gave to us, so there was some very helpful stuff in there, so thank you.
There's things in here I've been asking for, for years, and I'm thrilled to see it, thank you. And they were easy numbers to find.
I'd like to echo the same feelings, it seems like every meeting, workshop, we're getting easier and easier and better and better, and I really appreciate all the heart for each other, thank you.
I feel more informed and better able to make decisions with the information that we're getting, so this is great. All right.
The only other thing I have to throw out, too, is I know this is a public hearing, and I know that there was a chance to speak...
Public hearing? This is not a public hearing.
A chance, it's a public meeting.
Yes.
There was a questions and answers, and there could have been some...
I haven't called for question and answer yet.
Yeah, I, I just want to throw a shout-out to the public, that if they want to participate, all of these dates that are on that chart that were up there are gonna be potential opportunities to speak publicly at the Neighborhood Commission, at our workshop, at the other adoption process, that these are all chances and opportunities for the public to come give input, speak, and, and follow along with what this whole process looks like, so get involved and get informed, if you have any questions.
There's always council members at sanmarcustx.gov.
Yep. I just wanted to push the public outreach.
All right, is there anyone in chambers or the lobby who wishes to ask a question during our question-and-answer session of the program? Seeing none, I will not provide all the rules, do we have anybody sign up?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, I'll say...
Motion by Mr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Can, can y'all let us have this vote before you make a lot of noise leaving? Just give us about fifteen seconds. Terrible.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mary Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.